Thank you those for their joining us at home. This is March eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. It is four thirty P M. And this is a work session. So those that did come tonight, we appreciate seeing you in the audience, but we will be having no comments tonight. We've got a lot to cover, so we're gonna try to be efficient. Tonight, we appreciate that. We have Mayor's Awards next week. Number two is public hearing, consideration of a lease agreement with Amtrak for Burlington Depot. Mr. Tisdale.
Oh, not paying attention. So.
Hey, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
You missed that, but anyways, we're gonna try to be efficient tonight. Okay, so we appreciate that.
No worries, I just ran all the way.
We appreciate your, uh, your running. Appreciate that. And everybody, we appreciate that.
So we're talking about Amtrak lease?
Yeah.
Yeah, Amtrak.
I can't believe I fell for that.
We're gonna try to be efficient tonight, Nick, so we appreciate that.
It's helped me.
Go to town, tear it up.
Um, so, since I've begotten here in Ja- June of two thousand and sixteen, I've been working with Amtrak to try and get a lease. It's finally at the day where we have that. Sorry, I'm still out of breath. I literally ran all the way over.
Sit down, get this guy a glass of water. We're gonna go to number three.
I actually took it for you were excited about having the lease finally, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's how excited I am.
Okay, listen, catch your breath, gotta drink water, my friend.
I'm good. Uh, so what it entails is everything that Amtrak already uses. Um, it's twelve hundred dollars a month. Goes up by one percent every year, and it's a twenty-year lease, uh, to be renewed. They have access to the great room, parking, restroom facilities. That's the nuts and bolts of it. I think you had the lease in your.
What are they paying now?
Zero. I think prior under, uh, when BNSF owned it, they were a customer of BNSF, so they didn't pay anything for rent. Well, it's not anything to my knowledge, but since we've owned it, we have not gotten anything from them.
Is there any expectation on their part for us to maintain certain parts of that building outside what currently maintains?
Nothing more than we already do.
Any other questions for Nick?
I don't know what you, if you mentioned, that's a twenty-year lease with two optional.
Correct.
Twenty years, uh, twelve hundred a month. With a one percent escalator. They talk about the, they get use of five thousand square feet, but that is essentially the common space that, that they share with everyone else. They have no exclusive space that is for Amtrak itself.
Correct. And they won't. I think in the past, maybe they had some ticketing, but they, they haven't had any desire to put anything in there. They, if someone wants a, a ticket to ride the train, they simply purchase it from the person on the train.
Or online, it's simple to do.
And we would welcome any sort of informational stuff on that in the inside to a certain degree. I mean, there, in all honesty, there is really nothing for information.
So did, did anything come up while you were talking to them? This is just recent, so it's probably not, but they're talking about now eliminating the California Zephyr, which is our train?
I have not.
Uh, because I, I know that, uh, Galesburg is up in arms about it and, because Galesburg and Burlington are two stops that could be eliminated. So that's what, but there's no opt-out here for them, so they would still pay the lease, right?
Well, they would pay it, I mean, if they aren't stopping at our facility anymore, I would, there's like a sixty-day.
Uh, there is a sixty-day, okay. I didn't, I just saw this and I didn't go through it yet, so. Okay.
I didn't know that they had talked about ending the Zephyr.
It's, they, they talk about it about every other year, it seems like.
Nick, is there ever any possibility we become a manned station where we'd actually have someone there?
I doubt it. There's one in Mount Pleasant and Osceola.
Over time, I think that the man, the staff stations that they have are probably gonna go more and more to a kioskation, station as opposed to a staff station anyway.
I could see some sort of a kiosk, if wanted, could go down there.
Yeah.
And that would be fine. It wouldn't be any.
They switch to a kiosk.
Any real burdens on what we already have.
Just for clarification, it's thirty days, and, um, if they relocate or cease to provide service to the area, it is cause for termination of lease.
Okay.
All right.
Is everybody satisfied?
Yes.
Good job. Way to stay after it.
Well, I don't know how long my predecessor had worked on it, but this is three or four years coming.
Hey, but you get credit for it, so we're just, let's just roll with it, Nick. Just say thank you and walk away, man.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, which brings us to number three, because we're gonna try to be efficient tonight. Number three is a consideration of an application for state revolving fund, SRF loan, for the combined sewer separation throughout the Locust Bend basin.
Uh, so what this involves is, this is actually, I'll save you the burden of reading, or me reading it. Uh, this is for the public hearing. It's an environmental, uh, information document. It was in your packet. It's about seven pages long. I don't think I am supposed, I have to read it. You used to have to read it, but as long as you make the document available, so we'll, it's in your packet, we'll make it available, uh, should anybody want it down with Kathleen, and then also available, uh, as a packet of information for, for people to come next week. It discusses the environmental concerns, um, as a part of this project. SHPO, um, the State Preservation Historic Office reviews this. Uh, we have NEPA, I always use that. I, I don't even know what that is. National Environmental Protection.
Agency.
Agency, uh, reviews this as well. So it's the reason for the document, because we're using federal funds to complete the project.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Number four is a consideration of a sewer revenue loan agreement and a principal amount not to exceed six million, five hundred thousand dollars.
This is, uh, refinancing of existing sewer debt, uh, for two purposes. One, for, uh, debt service coverage, the cash flow purposes, they require that, this is one that gets a little bit beyond me and Stephanie may have a better way of describing it, but we have to show that our cash is adequate to cover, cover the debt, plus have a certain amount of overage. This, doing the refinancing gives us a little bit more fle- flexibility with that measurement. Um, it also saves about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in interest over the life of the loans, which is above the minimum, uh, for a recommendation for consideration of doing a refinancing.
We're always down for that. Counsel, we good?
Yeah.
Good? All right. Who's got a problem with saving money, right? Right. Number five is a, is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand and nineteen Aspen and Dill Reconstruction Project. Mr. McGregor, have you caught your breath?
I have. I was gonna drain some.
Is this good news?
This is fantastic news. Uh, we let the bids last Tuesday. We had four bidders on the project. The engineer's estimate was nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the reason for the bidding amount was, it was DOT specified jobs, so the concrete prices were a little bit higher. Traffic control is a little bit higher as well. Uh, Jones contracting was the low bid at six hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, so it was a fair amount less than the engineer's estimate.
Where's Jones out of?
Jones is out of Kia- they're here, but I think Kia Cuxter. Wow, that's Kia Cuck contractors. They're from here, they're around here. They, they worked on Agency Street, uh, and they're working on another project.
I just, yeah, right. So's?
So, uh, this money that we're paying for this project is our general obligation funds, the one point four million dollars that we borrow. Uh, the, uh, this project is also, it would allow for us to add to more to our HMA project on the north side of town that we're gonna, you'll be seeing here in the next couple of months.
Right on.
So, um, I might recommendation be award bid.
Sir, are we gonna take those funds and move it to another project or borrow less?
As he, we've already borrowed the funds. It's just he will do more, as he mentioned, he'll do more streets in the HMA project that comes up.
Do it.
Cool.
Okay, you guys good?
Yep.
All right, we're rolling. Number six is a resolution of admitting fees for Dankwart Park Pool. Tisdale?
This is a continuation. We had discussion last fall on the free swim days, and, uh, I guess wanted, uh, a direction from council on where to go with this. Uh, after review, um, staff had some recommendations at the time that we brought through, forward through rec, uh, a resolution, um, limiting the free swim hours from, to twelve-thirty to four-thirty on sponsored days, uh, maximum of four free swim days each season. Um, looking at, uh, how it operates and functions, we have a lot of, uh, more issues towards the end of the day. Um, I guess, looking at what they do, uh, we feel water safety is certainly critical, uh, an important skill to have that we want, all residents and kids to learn, uh, feel that sponsorship of swim lessons, which, uh, different groups have done, and, uh, offering single day passes, uh, can help improve those, uh, those skills and abilities more so than having a large swim day where it's kind of chaotic and, uh, trying to deal with that, but that was our recommendation. Um, obviously, if you wanna see changes or, uh, move forward, well, uh, the resolution that, that was approved a couple of years ago kind of lays out what the current program is, but, uh, we just wanted to bring forward something for your review and consideration.
On the free swim days, my, my computer's acting up. Can you refresh me? You said the proposal is to eliminate?
No, to, uh, have the hours from twelve-thirty to four-thirty on sponsored days, and then have maximum of four free swim days each season.
So we're going from seven to four, huh? And remind me again what the purpose of that was. I know it was brought up by Brad at one point.
Purpose of the swim days?
To, no, to limit them.
To reduce them. A couple of factors, just, uh, trying to plan for that many staff and kind of the unknown of how many are coming. Uh, the issues that we have on free swim days, it really heightens the, I guess rescues the, uh, amount of people that are there, kind of being combative towards the end of the day, uh, dealing with our guards and our staff. And also, we've seen, uh, whether it's relevant or related, we've seen a decline in our season pass sales as well, um, with that number, whether they're going to those instead of buying for, uh, season passes, it's kind of an unknown, but those are a few of the basis for our recommendation. We'd, staff-wise, we'd rather see, uh, sponsoring, uh, day passes, handing those out, where they can come any day, uh, with those passes instead of all coming on one singular, singular day, and also sponsoring swim lessons more so than just a free swim day. Uh, we're, we're certainly open, whatever council decides, we'll move forward with that.
I like the adjustment. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm still trying to envision how the, the passes would work. Can you elaborate on that?
They've done that in the past where there's pickup locations, whether it's at Dana's or, uh, uh, the Maple Leaf Center, or different locations that buy the passes, and then, um, they hand them out, and then they turn in how many they, uh, handed out, and they have to pay for that amount, so, uh, it's kind of similar to the free swim, but they can go on any day they choose then, instead of all coming on those singular days.
I, I think it's good. I don't wanna see, uh, free swim day go, but I did think it needed a, an adjustment, because it's pretty hectic on those days, and, uh, we're gonna make sure we keep staff's mind right. But I think we will be getting more help, so I'm sure this is still gonna be, uh, tweaked maybe a little bit again next year, but I, I think it's a good thing that we're keeping it in. I do like the, I do like the adjustment on the time, I think it, I think it'll serve us a little bit better, uh, moving forward, give us a better gauge to see how this is gonna continue, so.
I'd hate to see fr- free swim days go away as well, 'cause I think that's a really positive thing for our community, and there was some talk of private funding. I know one of the arguments was, it was enhanced staff, we had more lifeguards there. There was some talk about the community stepping up and private entities paying for that.
So they're already doing that, I think, 'cause most of the free swim days are sponsored, and, um, why do they do anything like that? Okay. Uh, most of the free swim days are sponsored, so, uh, most private entities are already paying, and, um, I guess, I'm okay with the time change, but how did we come to four days? That seems like a, a significant drop, because right now, we're allowing seven. Are there seven free swim days in a year right now?
Yep.
So, and, and what prompted us to cut that almost in half?
Well, looking at our, uh, season pass sales reduction and just trying to have it be a, a big event each month instead of kind of, um, spread out through the month, that, that's just our recommendation. Uh, we're certainly not beholden to four, but, uh, we do see the decline in, uh, attendance over the summer and would rather see either swim days more towards August or towards the end of the year, or, um, that, that was just our recommendation based on working through those on an annual basis. And this started to, this is our, we've had two seasons of this. Before that, we, uh, the Gentlemen's Club sponsored one annually. That was, we went from one, one to seven, um, so we, we increased quite a bit there, and our recommendations go back to four.
Was there any conversation? Have you guys had prior conversation at all with South Hill Neighborhood Association? Are they aware of?
I know Brad's, uh, talked to him. I think he talked to him today on it and said, there's been conversations with it, but we could certainly have more conversations on that, too.
Yeah, I think we definitely need their input, 'cause they were a big driver in this.
I did, too. I actually talked to, um, Carol Bartles about this situation a couple of weeks ago, and she had concern, uh, she was concerned that we were limiting it too much. So, um, I, I think they're positive, to be honest. I'd rather have kids at the pool than getting into trouble somewhere else. Um, I'm okay with limiting the time. I think that's probably the right course of action, 'cause less amount of time they're there, the less likely they are to get rowdier and trouble and.
And, and I think the South Hill Neighborhood Association was gonna volunteer some parents to step in and help monitor, too, so.
I still think we may have to tweak the days back. I'm just not sure with four, but let's, yeah, let's get some, uh, let's get some input, just to make sure we don't have to come back and revisit this again, hash it out, so let's go ahead and squash it once and for all, and then we'll come back and we'll, we'll end this, but is that cool with everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does that mean you want this to be on as an action item next week, or you want it to wait two weeks for a further work session?
If you can come up with a consensus with them on the number of days, I think I'm okay with seeing it next week.
I'm, I'm not, I don't think there's any reason to rush it, so I don't have any problem with, I mean, if there was a big rush, then I'd want you to, but.
When's the first swim day typically?
Uh, Memorial Day, yeah.
Okay, so we'll bring it back up. Everybody's groovy?
Yes, to bring it back to next work session.
Okay.
And.
Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, yeah.
And you wanna, you want the staff to look at the number of days, but the hours are fine?
I mean, what else do you think about the hours? I'm, I'm fine with that, 'cause I did think when you'd, uh.
I'm just verifying where you're at.
Right on, right on. I just, uh, yeah, let's find, let's get the.
I think that participants highly taking advantage of it probably are not gonna be ones that would be buying a season pass, so I, I'd hate to see this, this go away. I'd see it as a positive thing for Burlington.
Why not, why not offer them a deal on the first swim day of a discounted pass, if that's the case? And maybe we could get them to come on more often than just the free days.
Right on.
Okay, so, I mean, that's something to think about, anyway.
What's the season pass cost, Eric?
A hundred and ten dollars. I'd have to double check, a hundred and twenty dollars right in there. Then increases with number of kids and family.
Right on. We good?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Really being efficient tonight, guys. Uh, this brings us to, uh, the proposed consent agenda. Anybody have any problems with abatements? Doubt that. Uh, number two is a resolution approving twenty-eight E agreement between the City of Burlington and City Township Ambulance Association, the CTAA, for ambulance service to portions of Des Moines County, Iowa. Chief.
All right, so this is a reminder, the CTAA is made up of, it's a city township ambulance association, it's made up from everybody outside the city limits of Burlington that we provide ambulance service to, so a little bit of Henderson County, like over to the gas station past Gulfport, uh, West Burlington, Middletown, Danville, Danville Township, Pleasant Grove Township, then the Quad Township, which is the four townships that surround Burlington. Uh, they're all members of the CTAA, and they pay us on an annual basis for ambulance, uh, ambulance service. Uh, this agreement's already been, uh, approved by the, the members of the CTAA. We had that meeting last month, toward the end of last month. They approved it. It's changing how we charge that service from a, a formula where we base their payments, they paid a portion of our loss, so every year we would show a loss with the ambulance service, and whatever portion of our calls were in their territory, that's the part that they reimbursed us, the City of Burlington, so we were going from that to a per capita basis, so, uh, for this year, so twenty nineteen, they're gonna pay five dollars per capita. The next year it's six dollars, and then it goes to seven dollars per capita from there on out. Uh, that doesn't really, it increases our, our funding a little bit. I think, at seven dollars, it's, uh, seventy-seven thousand dollars on a per capita, so every year they would pay us seventy-seven thousand dollars. The most, in twenty fourteen, we received seventy-one thousand, nine hundred, about seventy-two thousand, so it's not a huge dollar increase, but that, that number fluctuates every year, so we've, we've had, last year we got thirty-three thousand. So compared to last year, to the end of this contract with seven, it's about double what they were paying, but that, again, that number had fluctuated, uh, every year. If there's anything.
This is something we talked about last year, too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we've been talking about changing, the, the way the contract is set up now, it includes two staffed ambulances and then a portion of like the deputy chief, uh, a battalion chief, and Dana, the billing manager. That's what we count for ambulance costs, but since we're doing the third ambulance, this is kind of what made us change the whole thing. When we wanted to add that third crew in there, well, their costs went, I think our estimate was in the one, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar range, and a lot of the, especially the townships, they have a very limited ability to tax for services, and they're like, well, there's no way we can afford that, so we reworked the contract to a, on a per capita basis, and it also would allow us to go to Henderson County, where we don't have any agreement for the majority of Henderson County, but we do take a ton of calls over there on a mutual aid basis to work in with them some type of per capita, a percentage probably on a per capita basis, so get some reimbursement for our services over there besides patient billing. And they've, they've, in all the meetings we've been to, they're very favorable to doing something like that, so.
And, and so this is gonna stabilize the fluctuation, which is.
Right. We'll know from year to year unless there's a huge population swing, which probably not gonna happen for any entity, but.
Right on, right on.
You probably don't know this, but anticipated revenues from adding in Henderson County, any idea? You don't go over there a lot, so.
No, I'm not sure. Not, not a lot, in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah.
You guys good?
Are all the entities within CTAA moving over to the new formula?
They all, well, I'd say they all voted. It was a split vote, I don't remember, but I think there was two entities that voted no, Pleasant Grove and Middletown. They voted no on their CTA, their own agreement, and then they voted no on this agreement. Um, they're not happy with the, it, some of the, those farther out places will actually pay more in this agreement than they paid previously. So Danville's actually, they're looking at a, an alternative ambulance service. When we talked about doing this, I, you know, and I told them at the meeting, if they could find a same level of service for less money, then they, they should do that. I mean, what community, if you can get the same service for less money, why not do it? I'm not sure how that would be possible. Uh, they did have Henry County ambulance come in there and give them a presentation sometime last week. That's what I read in, uh, Des Moines County News, so.
Isn't this right now? Isn't that further away?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about, it'd be, if they came from Henry County, it's about twice the response time. We're doing really good with our third station, you know, it's about a nine, ten, eleven minute response time to Danville, so.
If I was suffering.
I'm having a heart attack. That extra ten minutes is gonna.
Well, I just.
I'm suffering a massive stroke. That's, that's not a savings to me.
They're, they're calling it a significant increase, and it probably, I mean, compared to what they were paying, yes, it's quite a bit more, but it's, uh, about three thousand people, uh, how many square miles? It's eighty square miles, and at seven dollars per capita, they're gonna pay sixteen thousand dollars a year for ambulance service, so. I guess I, most places around us charge quite a bit more. Lee County's at just over twelve dollars per capita. Uh, LaWiza County is nine dollars. Henry County, who says they're coming over there, they charge six dollars per capita, so you know, we're right in there on the per capita charges, or less than most people, so I don't.
There's a lot of rebels in Middletown and Pleasant Grove, I know that.
Less than sixteen, yeah, I don't know how far you go before it's just, we just don't charge anything, and we just do patient billing, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but.
Well, I, I like the, I like the idea of having more stability, knowing what your numbers are gonna be, at least having an idea of where the general area is gonna be, that's, I mean, that works better. Are you guys good with this?
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we've got, uh, number three is resolution approving the renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire, license for Robin Canova doing businesses A to Z taxi cab. Good there? Right on. Number four is resolution admitting stormwater utility system fees effective July first, two thousand and nineteen, pursuant to chapter one hundred point seven of the Burlington Municipal Code.
So three percent rate increase, um, it's, would match what we have done on the sewer side and matches what we, uh, have talked with D N R about, uh, as we've been in negotiations with them over, uh, what we can do within our consent decree, uh, what they are essentially saying, you need, you need to be doing this level of increase to, as we move forward with discussions.
Is this one of those things where you can just set this up to.
Uh, it could have been.
Into perpetuity at this point?
We, we did, uh, on the sewer side, we did a five-year, uh, structure, and we could do a, do that here. I'm not exactly sure why we didn't do that last fall, when, when we did the sewer side, but we missed it. Um, we could do that, though, and, and get it to where it matched and expired at the same time as, as, uh, the sewer side.
That would make sense, and then that way we'll, next time this rolls around, I did. So next time, and when this comes back up four years from now, then we can have another conversation, and we'll be talking about both of them at the same time. That makes the most sense.
Yeah, we can adjust it so it has that language in it. It would, it'd be fairly similar to what we did on the other, and just have a rate schedule that had four, probably four years at this point for rate increases to match up.
I've got no problem with that. It's going down regardless, so. That's fine. You guys good?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, those increases are coming, sorry. Uh, number five, uh, I was gonna say this, I know it doesn't make my neighbor feel any better. Number one, I know you're watching, I'm gonna have to pay that increase, too, so, all right. Number five is a resolution to establish a new fee and charge schedule at the Burlington Recplex.
This, uh, charge for Recplex League admission fee, uh, brings back, um, I guess a form of the token. It's a, a ticket, uh, that has a dollar in value for concession or batting cages, uh, similar to what we had, uh, a number of years ago, um, but patrons still pay the two dollars, but then get a, a dollar ticket to use towards concession or batting cages. Um, these are being sponsored, so half the ticket will be good towards our concessions, the other half will be a sponsor, um, that's paying for the cost of the printing, plus, uh, we receive additional revenue from that, and then there'll be a coupon on that side to use at their business. Um, and those will be valid on a yearly basis, so unlike tokens that you could hoard up over ten years, you have to use them each year, and then we'll reset or resell the sponsorship annually.
So you're not gonna collect the token at the.
No, they'll get a, a ticket, they'll get a paper ticket, and then half can be turned off, used at the concession, half can go to the business, uh, that's sponsoring it.
Who's sponsoring the first year?
I don't know if we finalized, but I, I think the Buffalo had been in discussions for, uh, sponsoring that and having.
And your, your goal was to have that be something that could potentially rotate from one.
That's cool.
Company to another.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then they could have the option of having different, uh, coupons based on whether it's an adult league or a summer soccer league, uh, catering to who's coming into the Recplex. And then the second one is tournament admission fees. Currently, we have a fifty-fifty split of gate revenues for tournament organizers, um, going towards a sixty-forty split for the Recplex. And looking at, uh, I guess how we collect our funds through the weekend tournaments, and this, uh, Kirk estimated to be about five to six thousand additional revenue, uh, based on the split.
That sounds groovy to me. You guys good?
I'm good. I like that.
Yeah.
All right, roll with it, Henry. Uh, number seven is a resolution approving temporary easement for the Maslou Sewer Separation Phase Two. Mr. McGregor?
Skip one.
You skipped one.
Oh, okay. I, I apologize. Uh, resolution number six is a resolution approving restriction, uh, covenants, restrictive covenants for the property located within the Parkview subdivision. I'm trying to be a little bit too efficient tonight. We don't wanna skip anything.
So this is the three lots, uh, the, of the former Parkview Care Center, um, going through the process, uh, we've final platted them, uh, getting those documents back to record. We also wanted some covenants to ensure what's, uh, being built there, uh, kind of meets the neighborhood, so these are somewhat minor covenants, but, uh, does require start of construction within twelve months and completion of a home within twenty-four months of purchase. Uh, shall include attached two-car garage, uh, and a home should be no less than twelve hundred and fifty square feet. So just something to maintain a consistent look and, uh, feel in that area and ensure someone that buys the lots actually constructs a home on the lot and doesn't sit on it for a number of years, so we're start to receive tax revenue off of it.
Right on.
Okay, sounds good. Hey, Eric, can I take you back to the last one real quick? I do have one question.
Hmm.
Have we reached out to any of the organizers to discuss this new split, and what that's gonna do to their desire to have tournaments here?
I, I know Kirk is in pretty regular contact with individuals. I'd have to talk to Kirk on who he's all contacted on that.
We'd just be curious to know what their input. Obviously, they're not gonna like the fact that they get less money, but I just wanna make sure that we're not, uh, we're not hurting ourselves here by saying, okay, we're just gonna, by, by look, by cutting that ten percent back, are we left, are, are we more likely to have less tournaments?
He, he certainly looked at other co- communities and talked to organizers on what they pay in other areas, and we're not out of line with anyone else, but I'll make, I'll talk to Kirk on that, too.
Okay, thank you.
We're good? Okay. Just for the record, I thought a fifty-fifty split was quite generous. Mr. McGregor, please. Mr. McGregor, please, number seven, resolution approving temporary easements for Maslow Sewer Separations Phase Two. Or as my friends like to say on the other side of the globe, phase dose, please.
This, uh, these easements are in association with the, the plans and specs that you heard public hearings from H R Green on last week with the Locus separation. Uh, they're temporary construction easements, um, as noted in the presentation. Uh, a lot of the work is done in alleyways, uh, which there's adjacent buildings or other outbuildings that are pretty close to the areas that will be excavating. Uh, some of the sewers are twenty foot deep, so we'll have a, quite a bit of excavation, which is the reason for the easements. And so, uh, I, I think there's a total of fifty-three, this is a segment we wanted to get pushed through, uh, cause we've had contact with them. So there's a, there's another segment of easements that'll be coming with this project, so.
Okay. Um, just for the record, I'll ask that this one be pulled off the consent so that I can sustain.
Abstain?
Abstain, um, because I'm, I own one of the houses that's receiving a payment, so I don't wanna vote.
Okay.
That's good, thanks for letting us know.
Okay.
Can we pull that now?
Sustained.
Jim, can we, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a set date? We have. What's that? We have a set date, public hearing set for April first, two thousand nineteen, consideration of plans and specs, but two thousand nineteen eighty improvements. And then we'll have, uh, April fifteenth, transing grant application, public hearing as well. Discussion items, number one is creative placement proposal, Zach James, I don't see Ja- Zach James.
Uh, but we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Eric, what you're gonna say.
Steve's here, uh, we had a discussion on creative place making proposal, um, I don't think gonna apply at this time, but maybe Steve can talk about it.
I'm sorry, Steve's name isn't on the, Zach James's name is on here, Steve's name isn't on here.
I'm Zach James.
Okay. Well, hey Zach, break it down.
Wrong ten super purposes. Uh, yeah, just, just very briefly, in the, in the move of efficiency, this is something that, uh, Zach James and Tammy McCoy and I have been kinda working on for a while. We had Zach Manheimer from the Corps of Engineering come down, I think it was last fall, I gave a talk to quite a few people at the Capitol Theater, kinda got them interested in doing, uh, some creative place making planning. Uh, Zach Manheimer, uh, is offering to write a USDA grant that would pay, uh, three quarters of the, of the estimated eighty thousand dollar cost to do, uh, a five-phase creative place making plan. Um, and I don't have that in front of me, but includes, uh, things like, uh, upper story reuse, uh, I know a public art plan is, is part of that. So there's, there's kind of a lot of different, um, contingencies that come together, uh, groups of people I think are gonna have some interest in this. Over the timeline is very, very tight, uh, and recognize that we want the city to be, uh, partner in this. I think we'll just keep doing our homework and we've asked Zach Manheimer, uh, to push this off and apply for this maybe next year when we're a little more prepared for it.
Sounds good.
Accurate.
Sounds good, thanks Steve for coming in.
You've already raised a portion of the local match, haven't you?
We have, yeah, I, you know, so we're estimating fifteen to twenty thousand dollars required locally, and we've already got some of that committed, so. Yes, isn't, the only, my only question would be Steve, you know, some of this stuff we've, we've already done or have been doing. It's similar to like the area wide plan, there's, there's some overlap in there, definitely.
Okay.
So that's, that's, there's a lot of details in here that I don't think we've really worked out yet there. McClure at this point is just kind of, was trying to get the basics down to begin the grant writing process, but I think we definitely wanna have more details before we move forward.
And obviously the council would need more details too, so, so, okay, thank you, sir. Uh, number two, you guys good? Okay. You guys are doing awesome tonight, number two is HESCO's barriers. How many times have I been up here, Nick, three times?
This is your fourth time.
Okay, you're, you're three for three, let's see if you can be four for four.
Um, well, this is, uh, an item I don't really want to talk about, but unfortunately we have to. What this involves is we would be ordering more HESCO barriers, uh, fifty-one thousand dollars worth, I don't remember the exact, fifty-one thousand dollars worth.
Total?
Total, we just ordered some last fall, however, uh, a number of them were ruined, I, we had to HESCO around the Hawkeye Hole, as I call it. And then we also had to ring around the one bound auditorium and then we took down, so. Seeing the pending forecasts by the National Weather Service, uh, there's a ten to twenty-five percent chance that we could receive O eight level flooding sometime in April. Um, I've spoken with the HESCO barrier representative and we would have about a, a week and a half, two week lead time on those HESCOs. Uh, we wouldn't need them for the event that's probably coming right at, i- is coming at us now. Uh, it's more in preparation for, uh, late March, uh, middle of April. In order for us to protect all the way down Market Street and then some sort of protection for, uh, the depot, uh, we will have to order some more HESCOs. We do not have enough to do that full implementation. Don had, do you have some, Don? You have some?
They're mine.
At what point?
Hey Nick, we've, uh, on, on the HESCOs, one, just wanna clarify, is there a, is there an opportunity for savings for, for buying even more bulk than what we've got now? Knowing that we're going to be, uh, needing some, uh.
Buy more.
And is, is fifty thousand dollars?
They're, they're the same cost, though, you may save a little bit in shipping, but the amount you're spending in shipping is two to three grand.
Is, is the, is that gonna cover what we're going to need to get through this, this season?
I would like to say so, it, it should be.
Because I.
The, the, my hesitation on that is the, the railroad, uh, crossings that we have to make with the HESCOs. So if you have a lot of yo-yo effect with the river, um, there will be reasons to have the rail have access again. Um, and then if you have pending flooding, you'll have to put them back up. So it's not only bad for now for the north and south crossings, but we also have, uh, the hole down there that we have to ring around should the river come up above twenty foot. Um, cause we, it, the river will equal, equalize and it'll come out of the hole. Um, negating any value of the wall. So that was worked on last week some, to no avail. I, I, I don't know what the answer for that project is, unfortunately, it's not gonna get done before flood season at us, at us.
It's not going to get done.
It will not get done.
So you've had, uh, who's the contractor on that?
Carly Nelson.
You've had a couple of chances where they could get in and do work.
Yes, uh, the, the biggest hindrance on it seems to be our stop log, uh, system at the end of the outlet. I don't know when it was installed, but it was most recently used by the same subcontractor when we installed the valve into, for the wet well at the flood wall. Uh, more favorable river conditions at that time, uh, but they were installed last week. Uh, we had four six inch pumps at one mo- at one time pumping, uh, they had a clutch slip, so that's why I say that. We gained about three inches of, of room in there, so there's enough seepage coming around the stop logs, either around the sides or underneath or through the seals. And unfortunately you can't see anything cause it's all underwater.
So you had someone come in, we, we talked about this last week, knowing where things were on, uh, this, this spring. You had someone come in and take a look at, uh, is there a different way that we should be looking at this?
Unfortunately, the right, the, the, the best way to do this is to get, get it dry, get the water out of the area that is, that has been collapsed. The only way to do that is to, to disconnect the storm sewer from the river. And since our stop logs only protect to eleven and a half, twelve foot, anything over that just goes over the top of it. The conclusion that we've more or less come to is there's gonna have to be some sort of a sheet pile, this is a conversation I haven't had with you yet. Uh, some sort of sheet pile dam around it to, to help take off the burden of that river. We have to look at something else other than our stop logs, if we're going to ever make any sort of system repairs. We, for instance, we have two sanitary lines inside of the Hawkeye Storm Sewer, uh, that, that turn and go south, uh, to the Market Street List Station. If we ever have to work on those, we will need some sort of mechanism that functions to be able to shut, to be able to get in there and work on the sanitary sewer lines.
Is there any way that we could just make this work for now and then try and tie the cost of installing that type of system into the, um, C S O stuff?
Well, the Hawkeye's already separated.
Well, but, does that mean we can't touch it again?
No, it doesn't mean that, but I guess I don't understand.
I mean.
You mean the end of it?
You start talking about sheet pile, you're talking about hundreds of, of thousands of dollars a project.
I have a, I have an estimate on that, I'm not gonna say who it is or where, what the amount was, but to do the end of it. And it's, you could have done it, but hindsight's twenty twenty, looking back, we probably should have made that decision. But I, I still don't know that you would have gotten it all done in the matter of five or six days. And that's the problem is, is we have, throughout the, throughout the winter, we've had this super high, you know, river level and then all of a sudden it shoots down. And when that happens, it's sub-zero and you're not gonna be pumping water at sub-zero temperatures. And then it warms up and then melt happens and then the river shoots back up. So this project is, has been and is tied to the river level and, and until we can get something done at that location. For instance, we burned probably thirty HESCOs going around the hole, just because you have to fully ring around it. If you don't ring around it, then any of your other flood protection was to no avail, you shouldn't have even done it at that point. But, so, back to the HESCOs.
I have, go ahead.
Unless there's major disagreement, I'd like to issue, put that order through tomorrow morning and get HESCO delivering them as soon as they can.
We have emergency procedures that allow it. When Nick brought this forward originally, this was just a, a purchase that he was looking to do and have approved at next week's meeting. But the timing that's come up, uh, with where the river level's coming up and the lead time it takes to get them. He's really being told by the HESCO manufacturer that he should get it done now.
The number of calls that he's received has, has.
My only thing is, is that maybe we should order more, since you're putting this order in, maybe that number ought to be a little bit higher, Nick. You know, we're gonna need them.
I, I, we could, we could do that, is there a dollar figure, or figure or number that you're comfortable with doing that? You know, I, we could, the thing about HESCOs is, is we're, we're going to use them in some fashion for the next five to ten years.
So I would say that that number should theoretically be whatever number it's gonna take to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a posi- position where we have to make an emergency order.
I'm good up to a hundred thousand dollars, you've got fifty-one grand for HESCOs, I'm good up to that.
Do you have space to store them?
And Nick, they only last so long, cr- refresh my memory, there's something we can get that has more longevity? It sounds like this is gonna be a persistent problem we're gonna keep dealing with. So what's the lifespan of the ones that are, are better versus HESCOs?
I had talked about, uh, a muscle wall, it's a plastic thing in the past. I looked using, for instance, there's a, there's an area we have to ring just south of the auditorium, uh, and I looked at doing it with that because it doesn't have a lot of head pressure on it. Um, the HESCOs can stand a lot of, a lot of force coming out that where this doesn't have, in my opinion, didn't have the weight. I've never seen them and just seen the specs on them, to ring around that, the purchase of those product was gonna cost eighty thousand dollars.
But then what's the longevity, cause HESCOs only last so long.
The longevity, you could use them, I don't say forever.
I guess my comment is, do we need to maybe be moving in the direction of some that are gonna give us more longevity or just keep throwing the old, I mean, it's gotta be bad for the environment, isn't it, some expect to just keep dumping the, the old HESCOs out and buying new?
They re- usually we scrap the, the, the fabric is thrown away, but the, the metal basket that's created is, is scrapped and recycled.
Are people using muscle wall for, for like, we're using the HESCOs?
No, I, you wouldn't use it for that function.
I never saw.
And to, in order to replace HESCOs with something like that, I mean, you're spending upwards of, I mean, just three hundred linear feet with some corner in it, corners in it was eighty thousand dollars. On the north side alone, you'd be spending a hundred and fifty plus.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
Um, are, where are we buying the HESCO barriers from?
Uh, HESCO itself.
Is it, is it direct?
The reason why HESCO is called, it, it's the company name.
That's their, yeah, that's their name, I get it, I didn't know if we had to go through a distributor.
And we're looking for some alternative type products for the depot. We've never really had to protect the depot and, or we've never been able to protect the depot in the past. But there are other products out there that we've been looking at, but in this short duration of time, I wouldn't want to try and.
No.
Line up a demo, purchase and then try out for the very first time a new product. However.
We know we have a two hundred percent chance of flooding, good point, we know what's happening, so.
We're gonna get it, it just depends on how much.
Well, our council, are we good with, uh, with him getting what's, and is there a, is there a cap we wanna put on that then?
I just wanna make sure that, like I said, we're not in a position again where we're, we need to put in an emergency order for HESCOs. I'd like to make sure that we have this number.
Well, we were putting this order together and as it was coming, National Weather Service made forecasting, predict, projections on it. And it's crazy how fast they go too in anticipation of stuff. You know, Iowa City, uh, Torreville, uh, Cedar Rapids buys a ton of them, I mean, they protect three miles worth of riverfront with HESCO barriers. So are we, they go like, they protect a ton.
The likelihood is, you're probably gonna put those up if the river comes up to seventeen, eighteen foot and leave them up. And, you know, it, cause I, I think it was late April is what the Corps thought that, that high water could possibly hit us, depends on the rains. So you're probably gonna leave the, uh, at least a portion of those up throughout the spring, is that not correct?
Correct, we wouldn't be taking them down.
And I'm gonna take them down until the river wall gets completed, so, you know, if you, if you feel that that's enough to take care of this year, great. But if, if not, then I agree with Shane, we ought to order more, so we have them in stock, so. He's the expert.
So are we good with that, uh, for him to get what he needs? If you have to go higher than that, are, you guys wanna just say cap it at a hundred?
Well, yeah, to get to a hundred, call us, will you?
I don't see that happening, but I'm just saying. Yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that you need to get, get what we need.
I'll have some discussion on the amount and numbers and have a certain percentage that we keep in excess, but I wouldn't wanna order. I wouldn't wanna have a double of the order.
Yeah.
For that, and not that we would never use them, but the price on the HESCO has remained the same, the, the biggest variation is shipping.
Just get what you need, big boy.
And like I said, for the last order of seventy-five thousand dollars worth of them, it was three thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
Your variable on what's actually changing is very little.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Nick.
Uh, brings us to discussion number three, snow removal.
I did not have anything further to really present on this topic. I guess it was, I just stayed up here for questions or what the conversation of snow removal, where we wanted to head with that.
What's up with the snow removal?
Well, last time we talked, you weren't here last time.
Right, we had a.
Okay, so what's up with snow removal?
We had a discussion on, um, what was presented to us was for what we asked Nick to discuss was downtown snow removal. And some possible solutions to, um, how to make it more efficient or things such as that. And there was a bit of, um, desire from some people to, uh, make that plan kind of spread out, I guess, to, and, you know, to cover more than just downtown, um.
Talked about the potential of doing an odd and even system, uh, what, what are some of the other things that we discussed? This is going back two weeks.
I recall we discussed, what they're doing now is good, but it could be better. The perception is, I'm gonna stay away from downtown in the winter, it's too slippery for me to get down there. I don't wanna fall, I don't wanna fight the snow, I don't wanna fight the ice, I think we need to change that perception, we may need to allocate more monies in that direction. So we can enhance the patronage of our downtown.
And so I guess I'll review, what I recommended last time was that, uh, rather than odd even in the downtown, we go to a east-west, north-south. Restriction or prohibition of parking, uh, over the nighttime hours from, I think, ten a.m. or ten P M. to six A M. Uh, allowing for, you know, during the daytime parking there, but at night, uh, allows for, for my staff to get in there and actually operate with some clear zone. I do want there to be an understanding of what it's really gonna take to get the snow removed out of downtown. I reviewed it in the past, I have a seven man shift, twelve hours on and then twelve hours off and then another seven man shift. And we have to do the rest of town, so I don't know what, I guess that's why I asked it back earlier on, is what is the level of expectation of the snow being removed downtown? We can do it in very similar fashion to the way we do it now as far as timing. It, the parking prohibition that I recommended would allow some more room to function. I don't know that that parking prohibition's gonna get us done faster, cause you still have the other streets that you have to clear. Um, and I don't know that odd even is going to allow us to get in there any faster as well.
Well, the north, south, east, west, would it be cleaner, even if it's not faster, could it be cleaner?
Yes.
Man, I, yeah, see, I, we, this is come, this is the first time this has come up, you know, we, we've, uh. You know, we, we've, since I've been on council several times and I've never been, I've never had the strength to go any further just because, uh, uh, every year, our guys stay busy. When it snows, man, those guys are hopping and they, they're on a mission. And to do special stuff downtown, I just never saw that happen. I just never saw us having the manpower to, to do that. And I didn't realize, I still don't, you know, maybe that's, that's a failure on me. See where the, uh, downtown is, has this perception of everything's garbage down there. When it's snow, everything is garbage everywhere and it's just, it's just getting through the process, you know, shoveling and clearing out.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's where I was at too. I think the snow removal guys do a good job, but I, I would hesitate to do anything for a specific area. Uh, one area is not really more important. Your, your, your main primary goal is to get the lanes of traffic open so we can have emergency services and you guys do that. Uh, you don't go in the neighborhoods and, and dig out the, the piles of s, of snow and you do that downtown already. So to me, I think we've always done a pretty good job down there. Uh, this is a different year. We've had more snow than we've had in a long, long times. And so, yeah, we had some, we had a couple of problems exposed, but I don't anticipate having that problem every year. So I, for one, I, I think the, for me anyway, I, and I'm a big downtown person, was downtown merchant, lived downtown, shop downtown. I, I think you're doing a fine job and I don't see a reason to change it at this point.
I, I'm in the same boat. As far as timeline goes, I don't see a problem with, with the residential streets have to be, um, cleared. I mean, we can't fork over those in order to make sure that the downtown is completely cleaned up as long as there's a lane of traffic. However, um, if we can make improvements to the quality or, or the, uh, the amount of snow we can get out, if, for example, clearing the sidewalks better, getting that snow into the streets so we can get it out of there. Um, if we can do that, then I'm off for it. But I'm gonna leave that up to you guys to figure out if that's even possible. As far as everything outside of downtown, I definitely would like to have a conversation about whether or not it makes sense to me to an audience.
Mark my words, if you have a parking prohibition, you will have people that are gonna be upset that aren't coming here. But whether they're a downtown resident or a downtown business, you're gonna have people upset anytime there's appropriate. I, I mean, even in the neighborhoods, they, they get upset when we have snow routes. So I, I think you're, I think that possibly you might be creating a bigger headache than just clearing the snow out now. So that's just my opinion and I'm one, I'm one of five here, so.
I don't think the argument is whether downtown is more important than another area of our community or not. I think the argument is that it is a viable entity to our community and it's a tourist attraction. And if we wanna put our best foot forward, I think we can and should do better cleanup down there. For example, you can't gain access once you park your car. So the street wasn't the problem, it was the sidewalk that was the problem because then you had to walk in the street to get up to the sidewalk. And I know there's some business owners that are hurting and I know we had no involvement with the Tama building, but they are coming off a really rough winter for numerous factors. And since hopefully the snow is gone for the rest of the year, we can put our, our heads together and come up with something. And I do like your east-west proposal, a lot of cities use that.
Okay, well, that's one. Anybody else like it? Because we gotta have three people liking it to move forward with, uh, with him moving on that.
Moving forward on what?
On bringing this discussion, moving forward on this discussion item. I mean, is it gonna fall dead or is this something that he needs to continue, uh, looking into? And, uh.
What else do you want him to look into?
I, I don't know. I, I wasn't here when you guys brought this up, but snow removal's a discussion item. I'm satisfied with it. Where else are we?
Matt, you were the one that said it was hard for them to clean up because they had to go.
It was, when I did the ride along, I was, I mean, I spent four hours with those guys and I just turned it, learned a ton about the obstacles that they face. Um, we didn't get into downtown as much, um, but I spent a lot of time on South Hill, North Hill. Um, I think they could get their job done much faster if we were considered something citywide. Um, and then have the potential to get those guys downtown. Now, I know you said that there were potential issues with that about whether or not somebody moves their car at a certain time or, uh, what areas that would be impacted, some streets it's not, would be practical on. Um, I, I don't know how to answer those, so I guess I defer to you. But, um, I think the potential exists to make some changes that could A, make it more efficient and B, make it a lot cleaner.
I, I think the chief would agree with me. I think the number one issue with doing an odd even type thing is enforcement. You know, they, they, they have a lot of burden on them even when we do snow emergency routes. Um, and then to do essentially everywhere in town with some sort of parking pro, parking prohibition, I, I think that straps them from enforce, and I, I don't wanna speak for him, but, uh, you know, we've discussed that. I also, the number one complaint we get in the wintertime with snow removal is that you plowed my driveway in. So if you have a parking enforcement such as that, now you have to wait a whole, at least twelve hours, if not up to eighteen hours or more, to wait for us to get to the other side. And if you, all the cars are over there, we're gonna end up pushing all the way to the curb line. We'll be shutting them off almost a whole day after, you know, the snow has stopped falling. So those calls will increase by a fair amount. So that, that is the one issue I see with, from, from that, you know, from a removal standpoint. But there are probably areas that need to have attention that, that have some width restrictions that maybe we need to isolate and not do a holistic approach, but to target areas, uh, that are a little bit tighter streets and, and just do that. Because I don't, I don't know that you're gonna become that much more efficient in getting it done quicker by having that parking prohibition in place. You, you may at least move all your obstacles to one side of the road, but.
I don't.
I, I just hesitate. I hesitate to make a wholesale change across our system.
I wonder if that research is available anywhere, because I know communities have switched to that. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, as I presented last week, Iowa City has that and they don't even put it into place until they get eight inches. Cause it's too much of a pain from an enforcement standpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it's good that we're having this conversation because we have identified that there are some issues. And if we don't ever communicate it or brainstorm and try to come up with a solution, nothing will be resolved. So I think it's good that we're at least starting.
Are we good then? Are we starting at ending or what?
Absent a consensus of a group that's large enough to want to go down a certain path, it kinda leaves Nick with no direction for what to try to present.
I don't know that we established a path. I mean, we've just thrown ideas out there, so. I mean, I don't like the idea that we're not gonna do something because of the enforcement side of things, but I, I mean, I definitely understand it.
I understand there'll be growing pains, but I think once it's clear and with signage, it will lessen with time.
That's, and that's my position too. So anything we do, trash, we have to come up with enforcement issues, I mean, it would work through them.
Enforcement isn't the only reason why I'm out. There's very, there's multiple reasons why I'm out that I've, I've gone through this again many years and we've never been able to, uh, decide that it was, it was strong enough for our city. Other communities do it, but our community's different. You know what I'm saying? The ones that do it, they're set up different, it doesn't work for every community, but, um.
You talked about a not even six year, five years ago?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about the pilot program.
And that was talked about, part of that discussion was, can we do that citywide? Um, it got limited to maybe just certain widths of streets and then it got limited to three streets of which, uh, that pilot program's still in place and, um, it's not done to where it provides any benefit.
And that one runs a little bit differently than maybe what you were talking about where a snow emergency's called into place. And it's odd even parking, this is a, uh, a November two, I think April one parking prohibition for odd even parking. Um, I mean, you could go down there today and there are people parked on the wrong side of the road. And it's been in place for three years.
Hey, I just wanna, I just wanna throw this out there too. I'm, I'm not saying that our snow removal is perfect. We've got a lot of things in our community that aren't perfect and, and every community that aren't perfect. But just because it's not perfect, it doesn't mean that we've got a bad system. Um, yeah, everything could use, uh, some touch-up, maybe we need better blades, I don't know about all that. But, um, no, I think for the most part, I think we've always done a pretty good job with snow removal. Um, it's just some years we have some pretty bad snow and this is, uh, this is Midwest, this is what we get.
I know we have a, a business owner in the audience, do you wanna share your comments?
Uh, actually, this is a work session, so, yes.
Hold that thought.
I would love to, Ben.
Do we have a consensus of three or more for direction or are we?
For changing the program is what you're asking for.
Right on, because otherwise what else are we talking about?
Any change or what change? Just, well, I guess I'm trying to figure out what are we talking about? Changing downtown, are we talking about changing odd and even? Are we, there's, we've discussed two or three different things.
Well, I'm not talking about changing anything. That's all I'm wondering.
I think the guys are doing a good job.
Does anyone else want, um, Nick to come up with a more firm plan for the, for the snow removal? Uh, something to bring forward to the council? And what, what does that look like? And I think there's probably three or four different answers that you're gonna get.
I think it's early, um, it's March, so hopefully we're gonna have some time before the next snowfall. I'd like to see us discuss this more, work on this. I don't think we came up with anything better and I guess the optimist in me says we can do better.
So do we want Nick to come up with different proposals or do we wanna just come back and discuss it at a later time?
I wanted to, you guys could discuss that later, that's where I'm at. I think it's a waste, I think it's wasted Nick's time on that. I think there's other things that we could be doing than discussing changing snow removal, that's just me.
I agree, but I wanna give Nick an answer.
I, I'm fine with what we're doing now. I, like I said, it's, it's been a, it's been a different year. We've had construction problem downtown which didn't help and we've had a lot of snow, you know, I, but historically, the city has done a very good job clearing downtown, much better than the merchants as far as merchants, you know, shoveling their sidewalks. There's a lot of merchants that don't and a lot of residents that don't. But the city has always come, come forward and done a good job removing snow. I've never had any complaints and so I'm not in favor of pursuing. I'm just gonna, I'll come out and give you the direction that I'm at. I'm not in favor of changing anything. I'm, I'm in favor of continuing what you've been doing, cause I think it's effective and it works. And I don't see those, that, that odd even north-south, I don't see where that's really gonna speed it up. It might get a little cleaner, but you eventually get there anyway. Cause two days later, you're back down there getting the snow drifts and you're cleaning it up. So I, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm not ready to move forward on any changes to it. That's definitive.
Okay. All right, I'm not hearing anything else, we're gonna move forward, but we appreciate you, my friend. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. This brings us to discussion number four, fire prevention update.
Good afternoon, everybody. Bruce Workman with the Burlington Fire Department. Uh, the chief has asked me to come and talk about a few items that we're, uh, pretty excited about in the fire prevention arena. Uh, oh, first of all, I'm wearing a, uh, memorial shirt or a tribute shirt to the fallen firefighter, uh, from, uh, Clinton, Iowa, Lieutenant Adam Kane. And this was part of a fundraising effort to, uh, help his family.
Are there any more shirts to?
I, you know, I don't know, they've made several runs and, uh, there, there may be, I can check certainly.
Dude, do that, I'd be.
Right, so the chief has allowed us to wear these on duties for the month, for the month of, of March as a tribute, so.
Sweet.
Yeah. So what I have here today is, uh, Burlington has been chosen by the National Fire Protection Association or NFPA as I'll refer to it, as a pilot community to introduce a, uh, a fire and fall prevention program for older adults. And, uh, the NFPA is going to be in town later this month and they've offered to train our department and, um, area departments.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna need this program because we didn't wanna do anything about the snow, so I had to slide that in there.
This is. I'll reserve a comment on that, thank you. Uh, anyways, this is primarily for, uh, uh, helping older adults. Out of, uh, the fire department's fifty-three hundred plus calls last year, seven hundred of them were ca, uh, fall related. Uh, and this aims to, uh, make people safer in their homes, let them live longer in their homes. And, uh, do I have a clicker, Eric, or how do I do this? So that's the figures up there. Uh, and so one of the reasons Burlington was picked as a pilot program is, uh, we're famous in the industry for the great job this town does with, uh, putting up smoke detectors for free in everybody's home. And along those lines, we just received two thousand dollars of, uh, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors from Elks Lodge eighty-four, uh, a, as a grant. And that was paired with the one thousand dollar grant we got from, uh, Lion Energy, uh, Hometown Grant Foundation. So we're flush right now, so if anybody needs smoke detectors, we're flush.
All right, we got a head up right back there, we got what it needs what.
I'll get you some before you, before we leave.
All right.
Yeah, so it's a great program. We're offering, um, carbon monoxide detectors along with the smoke detector. So, uh, we're trying to make sure people are, are protected. Uh, so at the end of this month. Is, um, I, I'm just gonna highlight this. Uh, so we're offering to both, uh, paid departments, uh, volunteer departments. We're running two sessions, one on Friday, one on Saturday primarily for people that have other obligations during the week. Uh, NFPA is, uh, buying a light, uh, breakfast and lunch. It's a three to four hour program. And, uh, we're going to train, uh, healthcare providers in the community, your EMS workers or fire department and, uh, um, communities that are associated with, uh, the elderly, uh, community action and the, uh, the, I can't remember the name of the, the hospital has their own program out there. Uh, so it's going to be, when we go into someone's house, we're gonna offer them the help right then, how to, uh, prevent falls in their house. And, uh, remembering when is referring to, uh, they're gonna play a trivia game when they go into the senior citizen home or something like that and they're gonna help people remember how things used to be in the old days and it's a, um, I don't know if it's mononic or, or what.
This is gonna be a great program.
So here, here's some of the obvious, obvious things that, uh, there, there's eight steps in each program for fires and falls. So just things to remind people, uh, don't wear loose sleeves. And it's, and it's directed towards, uh, an older, a senior population. It's non-slip maps in, in the tub. So that is, uh, that one. Is there a national, another PowerPoint in there? The fire department has recently, uh, partnered with the, uh, National Fire Safety Council. Uh, it's a, uh, not-for-profit organization that, uh, fundraises for fire departments and they send letters to business owners. We're doing a go.
She was disgusted.
So.
Hey, Bruce. Bruce, which?
Uh, is there another PowerPoint on there? Open up Na- National Fire Safety Council, second one from the bottom. And then is there a PowerPoint in there? Did you see one? So they have educator, they have educators that, uh, and designers and they make as good of fire prevention material that, that, uh, that I've become familiar with. This is the fire pup, their little mascot. And, uh, they do coloring books, they do placemats for, uh, restaurants. They have, uh, age-appropriate educational materials, the whole gamut. So what happens is a representative from the National, uh, Fire Safety Council solicits, this is an example of another, a Tom who participates, participates in this program. And I think they raised five thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen and an equal amount in two thousand eighteen. And then we go to the, the store online and we buy the, the materials that we wanna distribute, uh, out of our account fund. So it's, it's a way of supplementing, um, fire prevention with, uh, donation funds. And there's a le, a letter there, they're asking for, uh, initial, um, contribution and then they provide the, uh, the envelopes, uh, to mail it back in as well. So be, uh, benefits to the community on, on that is just. So be- uh, benefits to the community on, on that is, is, uh, is, um, i- is, is, is another, uh, community risk reduction, helping people, uh, and like I said, this is, they have educators make these materials. These are good materials, as, as I have seen. I went over that. Well, here's, here's a list of the items. I don't have any to show you right now. Uh, folders, placemats, color activity sheets, books, games, stickers, things like that, that, that cost some money, so we're asking for help from, uh, people that simply wanna contribute. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Let's have a statement. Our department's famous, so I just want that. Did you catch that? Okay, okay.
Yeah, we've got a really good reputation in the state. Uh, ha- uh, the Red Cross seeks us out when they need help, uh, with things like that. Yeah, it's, 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 it's a nice, uh, point to be, to be known for.
Amen to that. Keep it, keep up the good job.
Thank you.
Sounds like a wonderful program. Anytime we can keep a senior in their own home.
Exactly.
It's wonderful. I mean, it's a cost-reduction standpoint and a quality of life. Once they really don't wanna move out of their home, they really see them decline.
This is being offered not only in Burlington, but our, our, uh, our, our county, and, and actually, we'll probably be inviting some, on- once we get the numbers on this registrations, if there's only open, if there's openings, we'll, we'll expand out a little further, see if there's any more interest. But I think we're getting a good response to this right now.
Doing a good job.
All right, thank you.
Love the T-shirt.
And chief, uh, thanks for letting them wear that, you know? It could be a, a buster about that, but that's, uh, that's good business, chief. Okay, number five is tennis courts.
It's been some, couple discussions previously on tennis courts. I handed out a memo, uh, at the beginning of council. Previously, I had some discussions with, uh, Burlington Schools and Notre Dame on the use of the tennis courts. Uh, and had come to a agreement on, um, usage of the courts, uh, met with the school, um, staff and, uh, from both schools, athletic directors and Burlington staff, and they had, uh, practice and meet schedules, uh, set for the spring as far as, uh, use of the courts and, uh, the meet schedules. Uh, further discussion was needed from each of the schools to determine acceptable funding agreement for the long-term upgrade of the Dankworth tennis courts. Um, and that was to be brought back to their, uh, respective boards and then brought back to council for consideration. Preliminary, what was discussed was, uh, upgrading Dankworth tennis courts with a twenty-five-year, uh, upgrade, uh, to a premier court installation and tennis surface. Uh, this cost is around a hundred and ninety thousand, that's what we put in the budget, um, with, uh, approximately half of the cost, uh, coming from an outside entity. And then, uh, every ten years or so, there would need to be some, uh, repainting, uh, done. Uh, practice, uh, currently as agreed, um, by the schools, uh, Burlington uses three courts, Notre Dame uses two, unless otherwise agreed by the schools, uh, for practice right after school. Uh, Burlington has scheduled their meets first, and, uh, based on them being in conference, and Notre Dame scheduled meets after Burlington Schools. Uh, any scheduled meets has priority over practice, so they currently have, uh, agreed to that. Did have discussion this morning, uh, with Burlington and Notre Dame. Um, initially Burlington was considering funding approximately half of the upfront cost of the tennis courts, or around ninety thousand. Uh, Notre Dame discussed, uh, contributing two thousand a year, over, uh, two thousand each year, over five years, to be used for maintenance for, uh, ten thousand total over five years. Notre Dame expressed that was the most they'd be able to contribute, and would not be, uh, able to consider, and would be willing to consider a renewal after that five-year period for an additional term at two thousand a year. Uh, they didn't feel that they'd be able to come up with half of the upfront cost, or forty-five thousand. It just wasn't something they'd be able to do, to have that even split between them and Nor- uh, Burlington Schools. Based on the funding amounts, uh, suggested or brought forward from the two schools, uh, the Burlington Schools feels it'd be appropriate to have priority on all courts and practices, uh, for, on all the courts for both practices and meets. When Notre Dame doesn't have a meet, if Notre Dame has a meet, they'd obviously have use of the courts, uh, based on those contribution amounts, so. Um, at this point, uh, they're not comfortable, uh, providing that amount unless they have full priority on the courts for practices and meets. As I said, this year, they've agreed, uh, for the use of the courts, but going forward, unless, uh, there's some other arrangement, they're not willing to contribute that amount. So wanted to have, I guess, a discussion on, uh, obviously comes down to priority. Uh, Notre Dame's not able to come up with half to have that even split of, for each, uh, schools contributing, contributing the same amount over a, uh, twenty-five-year time period. Uh, if Notre Dame continue, continues to give two thousand a year over, on five-year renewals, uh, and then you factor in the ninety thousand, it'd be about thirty-six hundred annually for, uh, Burlington Schools. So that's kind of the difference in amount, uh, on an annual basis.
What do you think that, uh, me personally, if you're paying that much difference in, in, uh, the amount, I think, uh, that, to me, I don't have any problem with them getting priority, because they're taking, uh, they're taking the majority of the cost.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm fine. You let them both come to the table and discuss it, so. I would say you worked out something there, Eric. That's a good job.
Well, no, we, I guess to clarify, Burlington said they'd give ninety thousand if they had priority. Right now, they don't have full priority. There's, they're sharing the courts right after school. Notre Dame and Burlington are both practicing at the same time. Their preference, if they're gonna contribute that amount, they'd be able to use all the courts for practice and not have
I misunderstood that.
boys or girls go later.
Similar to the arrangement that they were talking last year, I think, that they would practice first and.
But they're both practicing now, getting along fine?
Yeah, for this year, but there's no money being used for the.
I'm just making an observation. So I actually, and I, I talked to you, I talked to you about this, Eric. So, what, two months ago, I sat down with, with Burlington, Notre Dame's athletic director and Burlington's athletic director, and they came to an agreement, uh, with an understanding that Burlington would have, um, first right of refusal, essentially, so I don't see any reason, or it doesn't sound like that's changed. And at that point in time, Notre Dame was fine with that idea, so I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be okay now.
They're not accepting it now, and, and that's not a whole lot different than last year. Eric had met with both athletic directors, and they had, I mean, the, the original proposal that was brought forward a year ago, uh, they had had a meeting where everyone said that they were in agreement, and then it didn't go that way as it went forward, and, you know, you gotta remember to, I, I think part of that is, is that you're having folks who are saying that they can see the, the ability to agree, but then they have to go back and talk to their groups too, and some of the details don't always work.
You know, some of Burlington, or Notre Dame's discussion, obviously, some of their, uh, students are families, taxpayers in the community, but they're not, uh, so are Burlington Schools, I guess that's some of their comment, uh, but Burlington Schools are willing to contribute large amount if they have that priority, um, but they just don't feel comfortable bringing that amount forward if they're, they're not getting, I guess, that priority.
So I know this ended in a verbal fistfight last time it came up, so the way I, way I see it is one school's contributing eighty thousand, the other's putting in ten. Do we wanna get this done, so that the benefit of all the students in the community can use these courts? Or do we just wanna dead-end on this again? Hopefully, they'll be able to work it out.
So, no, Burlington's contributing ninety, right?
They would if, or the discussion would be, they, that would be what they contributed if they had priority on the courts.
'Cause originally, it was fifty, wasn't it?
We talked about doing, uh, five-year, is a five-to-eight-year resurfacing. This is a twenty-five-year total reconstruction, well, total resurfacing that has a longer warranty than, like, before it was a two- or three-year warranty, this has a twenty-five-year warranty.
And how, this agreement is for the full, just for five years?
Right now, we don't have an agreement. Notre Dame's willing to do an agreement for five years, two thousand a year. No, Burlington would like a long-term, probably coinciding with the term of the courts, like a twenty-year agreement.
Twenty-five years.
That, that I've got a problem with. But. Yeah, that's too much, but priority, I've got no problem with. I don't know how you can argue with them forking out that kind of money, if they're, if that's the route we're gonna go. I mean, the options we have are to take matters into our own hands and do it, and find a way to come up with somebody and sacrifice something else. That's an option. Or to let them do it like they said they were gonna fork out that kind of money, and give them priority. Or and so's.
So what's the likelihood, Eric, if, if it's not an agreement, if you say, yes, you're gonna do this, that Notre Dame's not gonna contribute a dime? They'll probably, I think they're, I think they're looking at, they'll take it out of town.
We'd, if.
Did they say that?
They're gonna go ahead and do practice.
Get to that point, I guess. If, if Burlington contributed ninety thousand, and they had priority, I think we'd still wanna have some charge for use of the tennis courts, just to main- have some maintenance charge, but, or you could say Notre Dame doesn't have to contribute anything, they can use them when they're not reserved.
When they're not reserved.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
We, we will have a, a repainting every ten years, that'll be a cost that we'll have to factor in. The hope was that Notre Dame funds would cover that, but if it doesn't, then we'd have to program that in to see if it's okay.
Okay with doing the, the Burlington having priority for ninety thousand dollars, and I'd like to see that term limited, though. I don't wanna do a twenty-five-year thing.
No.
Now, if they wanna do a ten-year, because they're talking about contributing twice as much money as they originally were, I'm probably okay with that.
I'm okay with that, too. I would like to be okay with doing ten. Anybody else wanna throw something out there?
Further discussion with them and go from there. So essentially, if Notre Dame, or Burlington's willing to contribute that, it's what type of term or timeframe they're, is comfortable for you guys and for them? Is the kind of discussion.
Anything over ten years.
Ten years.
That's me personally, like, John's already set up here, set it up here twice, so I'm one of five, but I don't want anything.
No, I'm, I'm all.
We've already, as a council, essentially created, kind of created a line where we don't wanna do anything over ten. Not just with this organization, but with others that we've dealt with.
Could be some renewal based on certain criteria.
You could do a, a renewal, but I'm with the man on that tennis tops.
Right on, right on. We good?
Yep.
You good, Mr. Tisdale?
Further discussions with them.
Uh, brings us to number six, discontinuance of citywide cleanup. Don. There's this show called Fairly Odd Parents. I watch it with my grandson in the mornings when I drop him off. It's crazy, but there's this character, his name's Don, and the guy goes, "Don's losing weight. He's slimming down." I think he's trying to woo my lady. My grandson says that to me, and I just start rolling. That's the funniest thing. I didn't think you'd enjoy it as much as me, Don, but I figured I'd say it anyways.
Why do you let me unwatch?
I, well, I don't know. It was rough, but it was funny. It's a ball of yarn, dude. It's the craziest.
Eric, showtime.
Showtime.
I heard you immediately.
No, I don't want it. I'm gonna put you to work. So, I'm asking the council to consider discontinuing the citywide cleanup program. I'm gonna go through some slides that cover, uh, basically what was said briefly at the budget presentation earlier this year. That was my cover sheet there for my budget. My lid is fully closed. I have room to spare because I recycle. We encourage people to recycle, and the goal is to sh- we have the lid of their cart fully closed in order for us to collect it. Next slide. During the bu- budget presentation, I had some proposed changes that I mentioned, citywide cleanup to a bulky item only. Uh, eliminate the allowance of trash cans and carts for leaf collection, which we talked about at the last work session. Um, I'm gonna be bringing forth a resolution for consideration, probably within the next, uh, four weeks. I don't see that affecting this spring's leaf program, but, uh, go in place for next fall. Um, I also mentioned about adding one crew member versus a hybrid, and hybrid is referring to a, uh, automated, uh, program, the fully automated, uh, truck, uh, for collection, using the carts. And then the last one is that, uh, whether we would, uh, move alley customers to curbside. All those things were mentioned at budget time. Next slide. Uh, at budget, I said, this is what I consider a bulky item, a single item in and of itself that will not fit into a thirty-three-gallon garbage bag. And then there's a list of examples there for you to look at. I probably intend to make that list much more detailed and more lengthy, so people understand what is considered a bulky item. And bulky items are items that are not easily transported by the average household. That's why it's desirable to have services provided by the community to deal with those larger items that, uh, most households are not able to deal with themselves. It won't fit into the trunk of their car. They don't wanna put it on top of the car, that type of thing. Next slide. Uh, items that will no longer be, would no longer be accepted as free, um, at the set-out location during what had been called a citywide cleanup, if we do, did in fact change to a bulky item program. Again, this was a discussion that took place at budget, would include such things as toys, shoes, clothes, hoses, bedside lamps, et cetera, et cetera, all of which could be fit into a thirty-three-gallon bag by themselves, or along with other items, and easily be loaded into and transported, uh, in the trunk of a car. If they didn't wanna use our tag program, if it didn't fit into their cart, uh, because they got too much garbage in there, and they didn't wanna buy a tag, they could easily transport it themselves. Okay, next slide. So why did I put out to discontinue as opposed to just simply go into a bulky item pro- uh, program only? Well, number one, if we discontinue the citywide cleanup program, I see that as a continuation of the philosophy that's been adopted by city councils, pay-as-you-throw, uh, philosophy. Um, in the late eighties, a city council accepted the concept, everybody pays one fee, and regardless of how much is set out, we take everything. In the early nineties, city council still stayed with the concept of one fee, take everything but restricted items. Grass and leaves were restricted by an outside entity. It was not the city of Burlington that, uh, restricted putting grass and leaves out with your garbage. That is an item that was taken in the early eighties, late eighties, but it was restricted in the early nineties. Wood waste was restricted. People used to have a tree limb come down, or cut, cut up a bush. They'd put that out with their garbage. It used to go in with the garbage. But an outside entity said you can no longer put that material in with garbage, so that was restricted, and that's, that requires a special fee, wood waste. Next slide. Uh, tires, batteries were restricted by an outside entity as being something you cannot put in to the working face with the garbage, so it requires a special fee. Uh, appliances were restricted by an outside entity, and that requires a special fee. In the mid-nineties, a city council decided that it was time to go to a pay-as-you-throw program. No longer one fee, regardless of what you're setting out, exempting the restricted items. Uh, you would actually pay on the basis of how much you put out. It was the tag program, and it was a volume-based program. In the early two thousands, an outside entity restricted electronics with screens from being put into the working face with garbage. Uh, so that too requires a special fee. Next slide. This past calendar year, this council, uh, went ahead and asked and input in place a tiered cart program, uh, a thirty-five, a sixty-five, and a ninety-five, each with a different monthly fee for each size cart. We did propose the possibility of going back to a one fee and choosing the cart size, but the council definitely wanted to maintain the pay-as-you-throw program. So, we have two remaining specialty programs that fall within the solid waste program that are outside the pay-as-you-throw ph- philosophy that's been pursued over the last fifteen, twenty years, twenty-five years, and that's leaves, and that's the citywide cleanup program. Now, we're not proposing to go to a pay-as-you-throw, uh, program for leaves. Uh, most communities do have, or a lot of communities have yard waste programs that they conduct during the summer, but when it comes to the leaf period, they typically remove the requirement for a tra- a tag for yard waste and allow the bags to be set out, because obviously you are handling leaves that not necessarily belong to you. So, I'm not proposing to change the leaf program to fit a pay-as-you-throw, uh, philosophy. But I do feel that we should look at that for the citywide cleanup. Next slide. So one reason is the philosophy as pay as you throw. Second reason to consider discontinuing the citywide clean it, cleanup is because of staffing. We do have seven full-time drivers with one being the lead driver. He's a working foreman, in other words. And we have one part-time driver. We've had difficulty maintaining a complete slate of employees. We also rely on temporaries to help when additional help is needed. Carrying out the citywide cleanup program at the same time as the daily collection of garbage requires a reliable, available workforce if to be carried out safely and efficiently. The ideal situation would be to have two men on each truck. We have currently, all our trucks are rear load trucks with two tippers on the back. And the ideal situation is to have two men on each truck. So they can share the getting in and the out of the truck, share walking the distances, moving the carts back and forth and managing, uh, citywide cleanup type materials, bulky items that are set out. That's the ideal situation when the snow, the ice and everything becomes very difficult work. And it says reliable and available workforce. Reliable, we feel our full-time employees are reliable, they're available, but they do get sick. They do accrue vacation time and there are such things as injuries, whether it be on the job or off the job. Right now, we have a guy that's gonna be off for four weeks or more because, working at home, he put a splinter, wooden splinter, through his hand. So he's not able to perform the work. So we're down one man because of something outside.
I got a question, Don.
Sure.
Have we ever, have we ever considered utilizing the halfway house, especially during like spring cleanup?
Uh, I have not attempted to use those people. Next, next slide. Uh, a third reason besides the staffing issues is, uh, changes in the equipment, uh, needed when carts are used. Uh, we've got the tippers, uh, semi-auto tippers. That's the current program. The upside is that they save on the lifting the men are doing. The downside is they're slower versus a manual collection. It's hard to understand that, uh, why that would be. Uh, they're saving the wear and tear on their backs, but a hydraulic device moves just so fast and the cycle times are what they are and they're can't, you can't, you can hurry all you want, but it takes that time for that equipment to cycle. A fully automated arm, which is something that I'm looking into in the future. Efficiency, the design of focused on carts, not the manual collection or handling bulky items that we deal with in citywide cleanup. Uh, for example, West Burlington, uh, I believe their contractor uses fully automated trucks to collect their garbage. Their citywide cleanup is done by their city crews. I assume the reason for that is because, A, they maybe view that as cheaper, easier. The fully automated trucks can't contend with that type of material. Uh, in fact, I think in West Burlington, I'm not even sure if you're allowed to put bags outside your carts. They want them in the cart and so that arm can handle that cart. Uh, so that's the third reason. I've looked at, uh, fully automated trucks. I found one that might lend itself towards citywide cleanup. I've still got some more research to do on it. But by their nature, the efficiency that's built into those trucks, those fully automated trucks, they're not really intended to be or used in a bulky item or a citywide cleanup type program. Next slide. Okay, so what's opt, what are the options? Option one, no citywide cleanup. In other words, you have a pay as you throw program. We wouldn't have no designated dates as we've had historically, uh, where we've typically set aside six weeks in the spring. For a period of time, we had six weeks of spring and six weeks in the fall. Uh, it's been probably, I don't know, seven years since we've had the fall program. Uh, a tag would be required on everything that does not fit into the cart with the lid fully closed. If you're buying those tags, they're expensive. If you think of all the material, and I don't know, if you go out and you look during citywide cleanup of the sum of the sizes, the piles that are out there. But if you were required to put anything that's, would fit into a bag into a bag and put a four dollar trash tag on it, that'd be pretty expensive for a person to do. So doing this may encourage people to upsize, uh, upsizing or getting an additional cart uh, to avoid the cost of tags. It would remove the incentive for people hoarding or waiting for a dedicate, dedicated, designated free program at one time of year. Maybe they would go ahead and start getting rid of things on a regular basis. That would be my first choice to, uh, discontinue the citywide cleanup program by having no cleanup program at all and having a truly pay as you throw program, which fits the philosophy that we've been following. Next slide. Option two, well, this would be changing the program as suggested in the budget presentation to a bulky item program only. Uh, this would mean that there would be no tags for the bulky items set out on the designated set out date by trash route. We work it by trash route. So it would be basically mirror the same type of program we've had for many, many years. Uh, tags for bulky items that would be set out outside of the program dates would be tagged, which they are being used that way now. But the difference would be, there would still, I would still suggest that we have tags required on everything, which would be bags that do not fit into their cart with the lid fully closed. And again, having to put tags on those bags, I would think would make people think seriously about the size of cart that they have from week to week to month to month. And gee, maybe I'd be better off to spend a little additional money to have a little bit larger cart than what my garbage requires and I could throw these non, uh, bulky item, items away. Next slide. Option three, and, um, I'm a little bit confused by this myself. I believe when I looked at it, originally I was going to indicate something different than what's here, but it says no tags for bulky items set out on the designated set out date by route. Again, mirroring what we currently do, having a six-month or six-week program where people could set out on their garbage identified date, bulky items. Uh, but there would be no bulky item collected outside of the program other than by appointment.
Outside of the program date, dates?
Outside of the program dates, right. So if they were right now, they had a bulky item and they wanna get rid of, they would call us and they'd say, "Hey, I've got a bulky item. I'd like to have it picked up."
But it would have to be tags.
Have to have tags on it. We'd say, "Well, we will be, have it set out on this date. We'll be by that date." And that way we could kinda manage our trucks, our personnel, try to make sure that we have the people there to deal with that item or items. But tags would be required on everything, the bags that do not fit into a cart with fully closed lid. And again, may encourage upsizing or removing the incentive for people to hoard things. So basically, options one, two, and three all have a commonality that says the small stuff has to be bagged and tagged.
Yeah, where's the, where's the fourth option, though, Don?
Go to the next slide. Alternatives to set out tags. Um, I think that, um, I think that the city council received an email that was forwarded to them from city manager of somebody who attended a citizens academy session and commented about, they thought the city is doing an excellent thing with the city, the citizen academy and suggesting that one thing that, uh, city departments and personnel could do maybe better is educating the public of options for this or that, or where to go to get this information or that information. Not so much talking about solid waste, but just talking about financial, economic things besides. So here, it says, uh, donate your item instead of throwing it out. Donate it, items that are in working condition, contain all their pieces and parts and are free of stains and rips in their best way to, is the best way to ensure that your throwaways do the most good. Uh, accepted items include clothes, furniture, household items. Those types of items make up a lot of what we deal with at the curb or at the alley as part of the citywide cleanup program. Next slide. Goodwill is a business that's in town. They're in West Burlington. They're open Monday through Friday, nine AM to nine PM. They take things that are in good working condition. Next line, or next slide. Hopefully yours thrift store, Don, six seventeen Jefferson. They take materials.
And they'll, they'll come pick it up, too.
Next slide, next slide. The Salvation Army, of course. Uh, we only found winter hours on their website, so I'm sure they're open other times besides winter. But those are some suggestions that people could take stuff to. And we're talking about small items. We're not talking about the big bulky items that they can't handle. We're talking about small items that they can transport. Next slide. So the other thing that people need to be aware of is there is a landfill out there. And look at that. They, they're open Monday through Friday and they're also open on Saturdays. They do have a minimum fee, which will cover up to three hundred and seventy-five pounds of material. Three hundred and seventy-five pounds versus buying tags at four dollars each. So for the price of two and a half tags, they can get rid of three hundred and seventy-five pounds worth of material. Yes, they have to use their own vehicle. Yes, they have to use their own gas and take their own time. But they can get it out there and get rid of it for a reasonable cost. Next slide. So some thoughts that, uh, I had while I was contemplating discontinuance is, well, um, how, why did we get in the cart program to begin with? Uh, we were, we'd, we'd said to the council and the council said to us, "Well, will this help with nuisances? Uh, can we reduce the number of nuisances that we're dealing with and seeing within our community?" And I was saying, "I want it to reduce the wear and tear on my employees physically." Uh, I believe my employees do feel the cart program is beneficial and better than picking up and carrying materials and dumping cans and such into the trucks. They do believe that. It's slower, but it has saved wear and tear. As far as the nuisances go, I know that we've issued fewer violation tags in the solid waste program than what we have in the past. I believe part of that is because they've been really, really strapped with time and it takes time to fill out tags and mark them and put them on the carts. And we have, as I mentioned earlier, have had a very tough winter. So they've had a hard time this year thus far or during the short time that this program's been in place, which I think it was like in October when we start, we did our deliveries and really got into the program. So it's been a tough time. I don't know if Eric has any comment as far as he's had a lot of issues with personnel in his department, so maybe it's kinda difficult to know for sure. But, um, that was one of the things that I tried to keep in mind as I was working on this, um, and making changes. Is that gonna make things really bad? How, how, what's the impact going to be? Uh, do we want to limit the number of bulky items per household? I think some communities, they say, "We'll pick up, uh, your household, uh, bulky items three times out of the year," or something like that, which means there's a lot of telephone traffic and someone's gotta answer the calls and someone's gotta schedule it and so on and so forth. Uh, designated dates attract scavengers. When you have a designated program, that's when the scavengers come out. And if you have four dollar tags on bags as part of the citywide cleanup program and people come in and they tear those bags open looking for stuff and we say, "We're not gonna pick this stuff up. It's strewn all over and they paid four dollars a ta- a bag." That's, uh, that's something that I'm worried about. I'd be concerned about. That's why I'd like to see people forget about the six-week program and just do, put it in their carts ideally. Stay away from the tags and, but otherwise have a bag here, a bag there with a tag. Uh, designated dates allow, uh, for, uh, planning for staff needs. There is a benefit. If we were to take all the citywide cleanup type stuff and concentrate it in that six-week period, well, I can staff up and get the people on board and get it done. And then it's not as difficult to deal with if it's all over the place. Community project allowance funds use is affected. The, um, trucks that are involved in doing the cleanup, once the garbage truck has gone by on that set out date and then they continue going in the day after and the day after and day after, those trucks enter the landfill and they say, "This is a citywide cleanup material. It's community project material." It goes against the, I think it's like twenty-six thousand dollar allowance that we have with the tipping fee at the landfill. Uh, by moving away from the program that we've had, that might mean more of those funds are not utilized for that purpose. We pick up an item here and an item there throughout the workday. We can't say, "Oh, that's citywide cleanup" because there's, most of it's regular garbage. Community project, let's say, oh, loss of service. Obviously, there's people gonna be unhappy, say, "I, we're losing services." And then there's also the issue, well, I'm saying the things that we might see is people say, "I better get a bigger cart," if they're gonna do that. That's why we brought it up early on about if we wanna make a change in the citywide cleanup program because we wanted people thinking about that, but we delayed the decision on citywide cleanup until this point. We do have a thirty-five dollar exchange fee in place to change your cart size. So people might be angry about that, say, "Well, I, I'm willing to go to a bigger cart, but I don't wanna pay that thirty-five dollars. You played a switcheroo on us in going and changing the citywide cleanup. If I'd known that, I would've got a bigger cart to begin with." So those are different thoughts that have gone through my mind in this process. Next slide. And I like this cartoon. I shouldn't, but I'm going to have the garbage. So I'm asking for the council's input and decision on this.
I'm with Shane. I think I need an option four. Um, I don't like the idea of, first off, I view nuisance as a giant problem. I think the carts are helping. Um, I think they're going to continue to help. But I think that any gains we've made with the cart program by eliminating a spring cleanup or something like it is just gonna, we're gonna, we've taken two steps forward. We'll take four steps back. If, if we wanna, I don't like the idea of having set dates because I also don't like the, um, negative externalities associated with that as far as scavengers go. If, um, I'd prefer to see us do something more along the terms of a scheduled appointment. And I think I've mentioned that to you in the past.
Right.
I understand that if we go to a bulky item only, I guess that's something I could live with, but I would still prefer us to take smaller items because if you look around, a lot of people do have smaller items and you can only fit so much stuff in a cart in any given week, which means that over an extended period of time, assuming that they're keeping up with making sure their cart's full of stuff regularly, uh, they're still only getting rid of a limited amount of stuff. That's, those are my two, two cents. Uh, I can't get behind something that's gonna eliminate the spring cleanup because of the amount of use that it does get.
I heard lots of citizen feedback on this one, Don.
Good.
It was.
That's what I wanted.
Ninety-nine point nine percent in favor of, of keeping the program. And I'll tell you some of their arguments. They argue that it would not reduce the nuisances, was one thing I heard. And two, the scavengers, God bless those scavengers. They're taking that stuff, keeping it out of the landfill. All that stuff can be upcycled. I mean, I, God bless those scavengers. That's a good thing. Three, um, I could see people arguing and wanting a grace period if this was implemented, feeling that there's more garbage they're gonna be responsible for and their can is already full and they'd want that fee waived, that thirty-five dollar fee. And the last thing was, um, I know from a staffing standpoint, it would be advantageous to you and I, and I do, I get that part. And I agree with Matt on the scheduled appointment thing because people do stockpile stuff and you can run around and look at my backyard right now and my porch is, and it's got some debris on it that needs, that's waiting around for the spring cleanup, so.
Don, can I, uh, go as far as, so I thought about this once I saw it on there, um, and all the emails and stuff, but here's what my thought process was. If we eliminated the six weeks and went strictly to a by appointment only, one of the problems with the six weeks is you have to pull the same number of guys. They gotta drive by a house whether or not that house is participating i- and has stuff on the curb or not, which means that that's taking, uh, time for them to do. We have to put the, the, the same collective effort into a neighborhood regardless of whether there's three houses that have stuff on the curb or thirty, okay? Now, obviously, it takes longer because you gotta pick up thirty houses, but you still have to drive down the street at the same time. Now, obviously it takes longer because you gotta pick up thirty houses, but you still have to drive down the street at the same time. So if we went to an appointment only, uh, would there be anything from prohibiting you from saying, okay, we're gonna pick four or five days a month and, and we're gonna schedule people on these five days and then only on those collective days go to the areas or go to the appointments, um, or the houses that have called in and said, listen, I, I need to get on, on the schedule. Okay, well, on March sixteenth, we're gonna come by. So we'd like for you not to put anything out before March tenth or March twelfth, which would, I think, help reduce the scavengers. Um, and, and I don't have a problem with the scavengers as much as I do the amount of debris, uh, and the amount of chaos that they create in a pile of fairly good looking trash until it's had sixty people go through it.
Right.
Um, and I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't come up with that type of a program, uh, versus the one we have today if we're going to make changes to it. The other thought process there is, is becoming more liberal with the idea of trying to get as much trash out of the neighborhood as we can is give every household in City of Burlington one free pickup a year. And then if they want another one, they can schedule it, but they gotta pay for it.
Well, we're talking about, uh, nine thousand six hundred households.
Yeah.
I don't know if you did divided that by fifty-two weeks and take away the holidays and that, you're putting a lot of house, potential households or special pickups. Um, the staff have their hands full picking up the garbage as is right now. Uh, we hire temporary help to help out, flesh out during the citywide cleanup. Or if we have shortages due to injuries, sick leave, uh, vacations. But we don't have a fixed source of, uh, say, full-time employees to backfill when people are unexpectedly gone. Or if we have a lot of extra work to do, we have to have a source of labor. We have sufficient number of trucks to pick up the garbage and have a couple of extras that we can redirect. But we have to have the people to drive it. We have to have the people to man, we have to have the people to pick up the material. And that is an issue. And I think, I understand, I have up there, I put up there by appointment only. Actually, I considered not picking up any s- bulky items outside the citywide cleanup program, but that would be unacceptable. I'm sure the council and, uh, um, you know, maybe if we had two citywide cleanups, one in the spring and one in the fall, then that would be acceptable. Uh, as far as the special pickups, I'm assuming you're talking about not only bulky items, but you're talking about anything that they set out, whether it be tagged or not tagged, or if you would just set a common fee. I think you've mentioned before, oh, let's charge twenty-five dollars or let's charge fifty dollars. Um, certain households would pay that. A lot of the households I'm thinking of wouldn't pay that kind of money.
Yeah. At this point, I'd be in favor of
They, they just hoard the stuff.
I, and that's why I'm saying at this point, I'm trying to be as liberal as possible with this program to get as much stuff as I can out of the community that doesn't need to be in the community.
I, I, Don, for me, I guess I, I was looking at it, one, uh, for the media, I don't know, discontinuing citywide cleanup is exactly the right term. It's modifying.
No, I didn't like to
I, you know what I'm saying.
And I did that purposely to get everybody's attention.
I know, I got you. I, for me, I guess the one thing I like is assuming that we are effective in communicating the small items go into the cart or a bag. That should eliminate some people tearing through and looking through items because you're only going to put bulky items out. I like option three because you could, you still have a set date that you would collect per route, which gives you some organization. And then the other thing is you could schedule appointments, you know, your discretion for bulky items with tags. I, I think that's fair. It doesn't eliminate city cleanup, but it does give you a little bit more control. So I, that's just where I, I'm at, so.
Mayor.
I'd like to speak on this issue, please. Don, you're not going to like me, but you can join a list of a law or a log list of people that don't like me. Don, I like it as is. I don't want to change a thing. I don't want to change a thing. I want to leave it as is. And, and I know, I know it's brutal, I know. I mean, well, I don't know physically, I've been there, but I, I don't want to, uh, I love that spring cleanup. Uh, to me, it's, it's so important to so many people. And Don, I think as brutal as it is, you're the man that makes that happen. And I, I want you to continue to find a way to make that happen.
I just don't know that we'll have the staff. Um, I know that, uh, Public Works is looking towards, uh, temp associates, the temp, temporary help to help them this year. Uh, we have a hard time getting people, you know, maybe one out of four come into the program and they'll stay. And we can keep them on. The others might show up for a half a day, a day, maybe a day and a half, two days, and they're gone. And then we're in our program and the people don't show up and, and we don't have notification ahead of time. So, um,
I sympathize with you, Don, with staffing. I mean, it's endemic Iowa, but if a restaurant owner had trouble with staffing, they don't close the restaurant for a, a couple of days. You have to, we can't penalize our citizens because we're
Quality of food might go down.
It might. It probably does.
Or the quality of service may go down.
I sympathize with, with the staffing problem, but I, I don't think it should come at the, the price of our, our citizens.
Well, I have one additional slide that I withheld.
Oh, boy.
Because I don't, I, I really don't want to do it, but let me put it up. Well, you consider it an option for.
Here comes the hammer.
Would you go to the next slide, please? Okay, this would be a fallback program on the no bulky item concept. Um, successfully, the nuisance department has used all roll-off containers. I don't know if you're aware of that, that they did that. Two years ago, they had roll-off containers. They hired a contractor to bring in, I assume, twenty-yard container, roll-off containers and allowed citizens, I don't know how they disseminated the information, educating the public if you don't know it, is very, very difficult. Very difficult. But somehow they developed an interest in their program. And as I understand it, they felt it was very successful. And they allowed citizens to come down to the riverfront and bring material that might have otherwise gone to a citywide cleanup. I'm assuming that's the, was the intent. They're not going to take TVs, they're not going to take appliances, they're not going to take items that are restricted from being in the working phase of the landfill. But they put containers down there and they held it for a length of time on a single calendar day and it was a successful program. So my thoughts are, well, that's not substituting citywide cleanup, but I suspected that the council might have some problems with the non-bulky items and requiring the use of tags. I believe the citizens should use the options they have available to them and recycle. And the things that get picked up are things that have value to some people. Maybe they wouldn't have value to Goodwill, maybe they wouldn't have value to the Salvation Army, maybe they wouldn't have value to, uh, the other program, um, hopefully yours. But, you know, they should use those programs. But this says that we'd use a one-day roll-off service program at a city-selected site. Uh, we would require, the idea of bags only, and it doesn't have to be that way. Uh, but the idea of bags only would mean, it's really focused for small stuff. Putting bulky items like couches into a twenty-yard container takes up a lot of space. It's not very efficient.
Yeah.
You know, they pay you per hall, per pole to go to the landfill. If it's got three or four couches in it, that's not very effective use. As opposed to calling us and say, hey, I've got a couch. How many tags do I have to put on it? And we pack in the garbage truck. So pay, not, it's not pay as you throw, but I think it needs to be a buy-in to where we would say, and this is my idea, bring down three trash tags with you and you can put in as much stuff in your black bags into those roll-off containers you want. No restricted items would be allowed. And I have up there one-day service. Well, when would those days be? Well, I'd say you'd probably have to put it in the middle or at the end of the citywide cleanup because you're not going to, we're not going to get the message out to people through the newspaper, through the radio, through our, our site to say, hey, you can't put out small bulk, small, non-bulky items. We're not going to collect it. So they're going to have that stuff left and then the nuisance will get involved. Maybe they'll talk to the neighbor, oh, the city has a program for roll-off containers down on the riverfront. And what day should it be? Should it be during Friday when, or Thursday when everybody's working? Or should it be on a Saturday? Well, the landfill is only open till twelve o'clock noon. I've talked to the landfill and they'll stay open for extra time to, if we're willing to pay their overtime cost. So if that's what you want to do, we can do that. Maybe we want to do one day in the spring, following spring program, one day in the summer and one day in the fall. I don't know.
That may be
That's my option four.
That may be a way to transition into eventually eliminating that too.
Yeah, but, uh, I don't, yeah, I don't want to work toward eliminating.
Nope. No, I mean, just the non-bulky items.
Work towards expanding it.
Well, as long as, as long as we're willing to staff for it, you know, that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. If that's what you desire.
Understand what I'm saying though. I'm not saying eliminate, I'm saying eliminate the, that might go a ways to eliminating the non-bulky items, getting people to put them in their cart or in that case, it would take them down and throw a bag in. Because eventually, if you follow one of these other options, you're, you're eliminating the non-bulky items. You, the goal is to have those go in the carts. That's why we want them to go with the bigger carts, uh, and, and it makes it easier for cleanup. Then you just have bulky items like mattress and, and couches and God knows what, cars, whatever, I don't know. It goes in the bulky, I'm kidding on that last one, um, in the bulky item cleanup. So you would still, you would still have a, a city cleanup. It would just be modified over what it is now.
Let's get this, who's, who's, uh, wants to see some level of city cleanup continue? Is that the majority?
As it sits today?
Huh?
As it sits today?
Well, just some level of, I just want to make sure that everybody is, I want to see if anybody gets like.
So I think a lot of people were alarmed. I feel like the majority of people we all heard from had the idea of completely eliminating it. And nothing, that's it. I think if they were to understand, you know, option three or something like that, where there's bulky items, but no small loose, you know, bags of trash, I think the majority of the citizens would be, um, would accept one of these options if it still continued to pick up bulky items.
I think they might accept it, but we're not helping our, our nuisance problem.
Has this ever
We're still going to end up with people hoarding small amounts of garbage.
Has, has this ever happened to you? You know the date of bulk trash pickup. You've got it on your calendar and all of a sudden there's a death in the family or somebody's ill or you've got vet appointments. I'm just brainstorming out loud here. For some reason, you don't make that deadline and that doesn't help our nuisance problem. So I like the idea and I'd like to explore the idea further of by appointment and make it a nominal fee because you're going to have to, to run the, the truck there. Somebody just moves in, for example, and there's a lot of debris left in the house. We could really help them out. They make a phone call, make an appointment and you come out to their house versus them leaving that stuff in the backyard, maybe on their porches, a, a dirty old couch that they're waiting around till bulk trash pickup comes around.
See, I'm, I'm in the same, same, uh,
And there's a lot of households like that.
I like the idea of getting rid of the stuff that they want to get rid of as soon as possible by appointment.
I feel like that would take a lot of time for scheduling.
You're going to have twice the
I, I can see the phones ringing and ringing and ringing and ringing. If, if in fact, there's that much stuff out there that people are willing to participate in.
Well, and here's the thing, I, I don't want to be cynical and it seems like I always am, but in my neighborhood, in, in my, in my neighborhood, just recently, this last two months, there was a dumpster that magically appeared. And it was in a, the, it was, we're on a snow route, my old house. And I thought, okay, they must be getting some construction done. So eventually it came out, I had a conversation with that neighbor and it, he goes, no, that's our trash can. So Eric, I think Eric knows because I called him. Hey, uh, then you have a, what, what's the deal here? And so they, and they had contracted with their friends to have this trash can and, and, and it was a dumpster that they were throwing stuff in and it was just sitting there. So after a couple of quick phone calls, that dumpster magically disappeared within an hour because the, the contractor didn't realize that that's what those folks were doing. So what my point is though, is that people are going to figure out a way to modify the program to their own benefit and, and not hear what we're, what we're, or not do what we're trying to do. And so I, I think we, I think we need to keep some form of, of spring cleanup. I don't mind the fallback program as a way to wean us off the non-bulky items. And I, I definitely, you know, that my problem would be, I think you're still going to have to, to enable to let staff be somewhat efficient unless you're really wanting to swell the ranks of our workers. You're going to have to have a set date on per routes when they can do a, a cleanup, if you want to keep the cleanup around, or as far as bulky items. And then maybe throughout the year do appointments where you could decide, okay, hey, on the fifth of this week, we're going to pick up everybody on this route by appointment. But, or something like that, but I, I, I
And you gotta, education's hard. We're talking re-education too.
I understand, but I don't think you can go strictly by appointment. There's nine thousand homes and so they're going to call every time they get a deal.
When was the last time you drove down a city block during citywide cleanup and every single house had something out? It almost never happens. In fact, you might drive down a street of thirty houses and only four, five of them have it out.
Some of those homes are, are the ones that should be cleaning up and they don't. Because guess what? They, they're going to hoard either way.
I get it.
That, you know.
But if they get that nuisance notice from the city and all they gotta do is pick up a phone and make a phone call to get all the stuff picked up, I think it's going to happen.
I'm afraid though, there that you're going to have to swell your ranks of employees to do a, if you do a by appointment on bulky items.
Then, then we'll
You've studied some You've studied some communities, Matt, that have done that by appointment and they're not inundated.
Uh, so the, the one that stands out the most is when we went to Davenport, we actually talked to them about nuisances, which led us to talking to them about their program, which is much like, kind of what we're talking about. They charge a fee, um, and they said that it has been, um, vital in, in helping them get a lot of the things cleaned up. Every nuisance, um, order they send out has the contact information and has the programs that they offer for solid waste collection um, with the goal of trying to get people who have large amounts of stuff, uh, to call that number instead of an appointment to have all their stuff picked up.
When you, I'm not sure what you mean by a large amount of stuff, but I did talk to a private hauler today who said they put out eleven-yard containers and they charge a hundred and fifty dollars for the service.
No.
So they put the cart out, they put the contain, here, they put the container out. They basically charge for the container, the delivery, the pickup and whatever the tipping fee is for the material that's in that eleven yards. And that's what the citizen pays.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what you consider a reasonable charge, how large of a pile. Eleven yards is a pretty good size.
Well, um, I mean, I guess I didn't have a number in mind. I'd prefer to see it be free because I'm of the mind, of the thought process that those people who have the stuff that we're trying to get rid of typically don't have the funds and aren't going to make the phone call if it's going to cost them more money. But, um, the program that, um, comes to mind is that Davenport, when they, you could go to the curb from one side of your property to the other, as long as it was at the curb, everything had to be bagged. No debris could be just free.
They didn't have scavengers up there?
Well, that, and we talked about that and, um, they were able to combat this, this, uh, scavengers because A, it wasn't set up on a route, um, and, and at a particular time, nobody knew about it except for the homeowner and the city. Um, but they also, I think, required that you can't put anything out, uh, prior to forty-eight hours of the pickup. So that way the debris's not sitting out there for an extended period of time, either A, getting wet or B, getting sorted through. Um, so those are some of the, just of the highlights that I remember from that conversation. But my point is, is they've got a really good program and it's really helped them eliminate a lot of the nuisance issues that they've had. Um, and then they have, to the same token, they offer this service to any home, uh, as many times as they need for an, an increased fee. So the first fee or the first load was very minor, ten dollars or something. Um, but then if a house has, has to do this four or five times throughout a year or whatever, um, then, then they would pay an increased fee. And I think it was like fifty bucks and you could fill your entire curb up and then they come pick it up.
I envision that that could help us with our nuisance, nuisance problem. So somebody gets placard for nuisance, is that how they do it now? And you have so much time to clean it up, where they make the phone call, comes out, cleans it up and we have a, a brighter, more pleasant community to reside in.
Well, let's, let's do some TCOB then, kids. Now, Don has presented us with three options, really four, well, actually four options. I'm taking to this Well, actually four options. I'm taking this five. Okay? So because I'm taking the option of keeping the program as we had it. I know, Don, Don, I love you, man. I just want you to know that and I really mean it. Is the camera still on, Steph? I was just gonna see if he's gonna say anything. But we've got, uh, we've got, I mean, that's always an option. That, I know it's not to you. When we've got option one, option two, option three, and then the final option. So let me ask, is there anybody that feels that they can't get down with any of the other options and they would like to just leave it the same? Besides me.
I, I, the only change that I would prefer to see is the appointment part, but leaving it as it is today.
Okay. Okay, well, let's see if we, are there anybody that, is there anybody interested in option number one? No citywide cleanup, pay as you throw, no designated dates? Okay, I see none. Anybody interested in option number two? Change program, bulky item program only. No tags for bulky items. Tags for bulky items set outside of the program. Does anybody, is anybody up for that one? I see none. Option number three, change program, bulky item program only. No tags for bulky items, no bulky items collected outside the program. You guys get the drift. Anybody in option number three?
I would be for option three with the exception of it not starting immediately.
What, you mean option three, starting next, starting two thousand twenty?
Yes.
I'm, I'm three right now. I, I, cause it's not eliminating the spring cleanup, it's just modifying it and I, I would be good for that right now.
Okay. Peanut butter?
I'm for five, option five.
No change.
Which means we keep what we have, but then we consider an appointment. Because I really think there are times, dire times, if somebody had a death in the family, they've recently moved, that they need to make that phone call. Otherwise they're hoarding stuff up for bulk trash day.
Yeah, but a lot of people bring in a private contractor then because it's so much that you're not gonna, you're not gonna pile that up in your yard.
Some people that can't afford that, set it on their front porch for us all to look at for the next nine months.
So, okay, you're really the buster.
Five with appointment? Well, five with appointment does the exact same thing that I'm talking about. But I want the appointment. The appointment, I think, is a big part of making sure that the trash is getting out of.
Hold on, uh, five with the appointment, I'm not.
You said five was leaving it as is, right?
Right on.
She said that she likes leaving it as is, but also having an appointment program where you can call and schedule to have.
Apart, apart from, apart from the cleanup.
Well, you, when leaving it as is, means we're gonna have a scheduled route, right?
Right.
Okay?
Right, so Monday pickup gets, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And she has said that she's in favor of leaving it as is, as am I. However, I want to have some type of appointment availability.
Instead of having the scheduled.
It doesn't have, I would prefer to have it instead, but it.
In addition.
But if it has to be.
Have a fee then because he's gonna have to hire extra people.
Right, you would be. You would have a fee. If it's, if it's, if it's instead, it should be free. If it's and, there's a fee.
I don't envision that it's gonna be excessive. It's possible if there's only one to three a day, they could tie it in. You know, these people are gonna call and tie it in on the day when they're at their route or at their street.
Be excessive either, but maybe, maybe you're, no, Don's sitting here and saying, listen, it was a really bad idea and then we can talk about it again.
Then we know something that didn't work, but.
I'm just worried about being able to meet our expectations and requirements with the people that we've got and the time that we got.
No, here's the thing, guys. He's the one that's been doing this for years, so I, I kinda kinda go with what. If, if you're gonna change the program, you're gonna have to look at what his recommendations are. Otherwise, you stay where Shane's at and you don't change it for this year. Until you decide something else. Because I, I, we can all, we can all guess that it's not gonna be a big deal or a big change by appointment. But, uh, my, my hunch would be, he, all of a sudden, it's gonna be, well, I can just call for an appointment. And it's not on a, a set designated day. They're gonna get phone calls all the, yeah, but. There could be nine thousand phone calls if every, if every, if every house in the community does it.
Where the phone call of, and this is gonna happen, where the phone call of, I called, it didn't get picked up yet. You know, I mean, just the. I think, I, I, I wanna eliminate phone calls. I, I really do. I don't wanna add more phone calls, uh, going to any department.
Everybody calls once, that's nine, nine thousand calls.
But that's, that's unrealistic. I mean, not everybody is going to call.
My observation is.
Well, I, I will state that we probably are dealing with five to seven carts a week right now, you know.
For switching out or?
Switching out. Uh, I've got a problem with a cart, someone stole my cart. Uh, um, I've got a broken wheel. Um, uh, but we're dealing with, I'd say, five to seven carts a week. And the phone calls associated with that. And we gotta find the time, the people to go out and deal with the carts, so.
As you talk about, um, these different options, Don's brought these options, I think, because. Or at least partially because as you switch programs, it takes more time to pick up with the carts. And so as he looks at this cleanup schedule, it's already difficult to get it done. Uh, it was last year or the year before, even with temp help, it's hard to get enough temp help to get the work done. He's looking at this as being harder as he moves into the future. What you just talked about with option five, uh, which is continuing to have the existing program and to have an additional appointment program is adding to it. Um, and, and that's part of what his alternative was, is that if you're gonna maintain the system, we're, we're likely talking about. The, the potential need to add a staff if you're, if you're trying to, he's trying to figure out a way to keep from having to add a staff person. Um, that option that you just talked about is going the opposite direction. Um, from the nuisance department's side, moving away from having this small item pickup. That Don wants to see occur because it will help with that schedule. If you don't have some solution for it, they see additional nuisance problems. Doesn't mean that you can't have something like the alternative that he had with having the, having an, a centralized location where you can come and dump. Uh, like, uh, the nuisance department has done in the fall. But somewhere in there, you're gonna end up with additional problems if you don't have some, some type of solution.
Say, I, I would be three with, with the four, with the fallback op- option. I think, I think eventually you would wean people off it. But either two or three, you're gonna have, I, that would be my opinion. I don't think we can do this. Most people, if you say, okay, you know, in the spring, this is my week, we're gonna do, uh, cleanup that week, they're gonna get their stuff going. Their bulky items out. And then if you have the, 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 that same week, you have the small items that can go in. But eventually I think they'll learn that, hey, put them in your cart or transition to a bigger cart and go from there. I think that if you eliminate those small items, you're gonna have less trash in people's yards during spring cleanup.
I don't think that you're right.
I think we've irritated the citizens enough. I've switched my vote to five, no change. Keep it easy.
I'm no change. I know that that's not a popular answer with staff.
Maybe we can move in that direction, Matt, but we can't move too quick. We gotta, we gotta get used to the new semi automated arms and, and, and. We gotta get used to what we have and then maybe start making some strides.
I mean, I'm, I'm, uh, yeah.
I s- I still like the idea. I think it has merit. But maybe we need to move a little bit more slowly.
Well, that's two no changers, Matt, are you?
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially leave it as is until we figure out what we're gonna do. Um, but it's not a conversation that I don't wanna talk about from.
Right on, right, oh yeah. Well, he knows this is gonna be coming back up, he knows. Um, it's gonna have to, but I. Man, I, I sure hope something breaks because I'd really love to see this program and maybe you need to come back to us.
I just, I think.
Talk about Morse and talk about.
It's extremely hypocritical as far as I'm concerned to sit up here and talk about limiting a program when every single one of us is constantly talking about. What can we do to clean up this community? So to me, sitting up here and saying, okay, now we're gonna restrict trash that we're taking or we're gonna eliminate a program. Or, um, we're gonna start charging fees. It, it's going exactly against the grain of what we've all said that we wanna try and do.
Uh, we've, I feel like with the new carts, we have taken a step in that direction because I have learned now. What I can fit in the trash can, what I now take to donate. And I have a few items that are large that I need to get rid of somehow and.
Yeah, I think that, that, uh, Ken's done a great job.
It, it's gonna take time for people to get used to putting those small items in there.
But then I don't wanna follow that up with a decision that's now going to take a step back.
Well, uh, I will say that I know that we've left some large piles in the past programs. Because the amount of material that's set out is just a, a lot. And we've taken what we're gonna take and we leave it. I know that.
Great argument for an appointment only program.
And they do get, it does get cleaned up. Now, I don't know if it goes back into a garage or back into the basement or if it gets hauled out to the landfill. Whereas I said, they pay ten dollars. Ten dollars is very cheap for three hundred and seventy-five pounds worth of material. That's what they wanna do, is they wanna throw it away. Um, one, you know, one tag is four dollars. Going to the next size cart is three dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, we've had people call that use two and three tags a week and we say, why are you doing that? Why don't you get? An extra, extra cart. You can get a sixty-five gallon cart for eight dollars a month. That's two trash tags. That you're spending in one week and you're gonna spend that much in four weeks. Education is a very difficult thing and there are people out there that they just still haven't gotten it in their head.
You're right.
And they're not gonna get it in their head until you create that, they continue to create that situation. To where they have this pile of stuff that they haven't tagged and they're looking at putting tags on it. And then you get in that conversation, hopefully through nuisance or through us on the telephone. Why didn't you take it? Well, it wasn't tagged. But I, I, the one thing I fear are scavengers. And I know that, that's what you said about the appointment. The appointment helps overcome scavengers. I know scavengers are entertaining.
I know, I need to clarify and I, and I tried to educate.
Kinda like watching rats at the neighbor's house running around outside.
And you know they're gonna open those bags, so I tell them to put that clothing in a box. You know they're gonna go through it, so.
So, what's the consensus? You wanna leave the program? You got three people who wanna leave the program as is for another year.
I'd like to, I'd like to leave it as is.
I would like to go to an appointment only, but we don't have enough support for that. So then my fallback position is going to be leaving it as is.
Okay.
Peanut butter, you're my third.
Yes, yes.
And we're not talking about containers on the riverfront.
I've been contacted on this issue more than any other issue since I've been on.
Well, trash is trash, it's just a simple, it's just a simple subject.
So, and my problem with the containers on the riverfront is, um, A, I don't like the idea of having trash on the riverfront. But, but even though it's for a limited amount of time, I understand that. But B, um, a lot of the stuff that I would put out for spring cleanup. Or a lot of people put out for spring cleanup, I don't want sitting in my car. Um, and typically it's stuff that's been either A, piling up in my garage or maybe been sitting outside for some time. And then it gets moved to the curb so that you guys can pick it up and throw it in the back of the dump, of the garbage truck. I think a lot of people are gonna have that same opinion. One of the most common things that you see is hoses, flower pots. I mean, there's a lot of things that people, that would be considered a small item. Um, and, and some of those, and some of those are things that aren't gonna fit in a thirty-five gallon can. So, um, those are things that also a lot of people aren't gonna wanna put in their car. So I think it just, there, I'm sure there's a long list there. And I think that would create more problems than any.
I thought you said that.
You might not have space at the riverfront this year.
I thought you said that turned out pretty well when we set the dumpsters out.
That's what I understand, but that wasn't my program.
I know we recently did it for like electronics, um.
It's like a three or four years ago, a tag program. Purchased tags.
What did we just do this last year? We said something, we had one at the church and, uh, at, uh.
That's two years ago, last year was at the riverfront.
Okay. All right, well, it looks like this year we're going to, uh, ask you to be the magic man, Don.
Hey. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
I said that I loved you earlier. I didn't get I love you back, Don.
You're not gonna get it.
Well, all right, uh, anybody, anybody have any issues with appointments?
No.
Okay. Leila, and I know what your name is, but that's what I call you. Did you make sure you documented that for the Hawkeye? That I did tell Don that I loved him, but he didn't say that I love you back?
Hightower's gun on tape.
Okay, Hightower's gun on tape. Peanut butter?
Had a wonderful time at Southeast Iowa Legislative Days as always. It's, it's good to chat with our elected officials. And the student power that was there, the synergy and the topics and their creativity was outstanding. So a big thank you to, uh, Carleen Woodside, everybody involved in that. Had a great time. Hope they did too. Do away with that weather. Coming back from that, every year the weather is always terrible.
John Billups?
Uh, council talks, uh, Wednesday, so, you know, is there any volunteers?
I think I can.
I cannot, sorry.
I think I, I think I can.
Okay, you and, you and them.
Yes, sir.
Possibly, I gotta look.
All right, so, someone, someone let me know. Um, you guys let me know, just respond to me. But it's Wednesday at nine o'clock, so people listen in. Uh, today there was a spirited discussion about property tax assessment. Remember the city didn't do that? That's all county. Uh, that's it.
Um, I'm thinking.
Okay, uh, I do not have anything at this time. Thank you.
Council?
I attended Southeast Iowa days as well. Uh, anybody who has never been to the Capitol during, um, uh, the session. Highly recommend that you do it. Um, the number of people buzzing around there and things going on is pretty impressive. So, uh, always, as always, it's great to talk to our legislators and thanks for the trip, Jim.
James?
I had one other thing. What did you say our, our season pass was at swimming?
Actually, it's seventy for an individual.
Hundred and twenty for a family.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, but I think that they, you don't, you shouldn't have a cap on that for a number of people in the family that.
Here it is. One thirty-five for five family members, ten dollars additional each over five.
Okay, so.
So Jim paying like four hundred dollars.
Okay, that's better than what I thought was. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Sorry, Jim, didn't mean to interrupt. We're right, we're right in there then.
Okay, all right.
Um, I did hand out and I sent to you, to the council, uh, the rating from S and P. Uh, we were ma- we maintained our.
A plus rating.
Uh, which is, uh, you know, good quality. Uh, if you look though, again, I did mention that. We are in the lower end for the larger communities in Iowa. Uh, they, some of the factors that impact us, some of them we just are not going to, uh, be able to address. Talks about our weak, uh, economy, uh, average earnings, that's I think seventy-eight percent of federal. Uh, just puts us at a spot where the buying power here is challenged enough that they, 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 they call that a structural thing. That, uh, is just difficult to overcome. Some of the things that are a little bit more in our control, uh, if we were to hit the fifteen percent cash balance. They, that was really focused on, uh, obtaining that goal will change, there's, one of the designations in there. Is, uh, oh, I can't even think of our financial position. Maybe that's where it calls it. It would switch to strong in their evaluation, which one of the, it's one of the main categories that I think would help. That could help us potentially see a bump up in, in the years to come. Um, we have some financial policies that they'd like to see rewritten, uh, and that's one that I think we need to have some discussion with them. To see what they're getting at for our debt management policies that they'd like to see enhanced. Um, another factor that is within our ability, but is one that's a little bit harder to deal with. Uh, the, our, the amount of debt we have outstanding. Uh, our debt load they look at is high. Uh, it's difficult to, to get beyond that though. But that would be something that is, we look, we currently have a policy that calls for us to stable a seventy percent of usage. If you look at the average community in Iowa is using about fifty percent or forty-five percent, uh, of their debt capacity. Uh, it would put us, if we were down in that framework and a lot, we wouldn't be as challenged with, with the amount of debt load that we have. And I think that's something that they like to see long term from us as a community. But we do maintain our existing rating. Um, and we're, we're pretty happy that we're able to, to, to say that. And that's all I had.
Um, I was also at the Capitol this week. I got to spend a little time with Tom Green and, uh, a few of the senators there. It was a good time. Um, yeah, the weather was bad, but yeah, it was a, it was a good trip. We had snowball this weekend. It was phenomenal. Um, I was not there on Friday night, but I did the opening pair on Thursday night, so whoever said.
You were mentioned Friday.
That's what somebody said. Huh? Okay, well, they need to make sure that they.
And the majority of the citizens all cried out, we don't either.
So. This guy's out of order. But, but I did show up. I did do the opening prayer on Thursday night, like I, like I told them I would. I, I wanna say thank you to Joey from Senator Earn's office. He came down and we had some good conversation. Thank you, counselor, for coming down as well. That was, that was really, very, very well. Also, Scooters had their ribbon cutting and I gotta make my own quad espresso. I know how to do it now. I feel like I'm a barista, you know, what they call it, whatever. So that was pretty cool, but we wanna support some of our local business. If you haven't tried the Scooters coffee, it's, it's quite delicious. Get a quad espresso, it'll keep you going all day. Also, if you haven't seen, I'm gonna just go ahead and do this. Rhonda, your hair looks great tonight. I just, I just want that documented, but that's not what I wanted to do. I guess there's a bunch of fireballers that are people that I was on that Fireball Run thing with and they, most of them have already benched to watch the Fireball Run thing. I don't have the guts to do that. But in watching it, they said, I got a bunch of text messages and phone calls and they said, Mayor, they said in just about every episode, there's somebody with one of your bracelets. So they said, we started a contest to see how many times that they can spot the Burlington bracelet. So that's going on, so I encourage you. Burlington, if you guys have walked it, see how many times you can spot the Burlington bracelet. Whoever comes up with the actual number first is gonna win something. Not once you're gonna win, but you're gonna win something, so.
A bracelet?
A bracelet, that's right. You're gonna win a, you're gonna win a bracelet. I've only got three left, so I passed them all out on Fireball Run. Also, again, just another big shout out to Great River Christian Basketball Team. Their party's on Friday. They won the Hustle Cup. They were, they were David against Goliaths this year, but they really balled out. And also, Jim's daughter plays for my, for my team. And the very last game, I let the parents play against their kids and he fouled his own daughter. So that's the city manager that we've got, guys.
I blocked her shot.
You know what? Don't start lying. All right, anything else before we go?
Did you tee him up?
Uh, yeah, man, I had to tackle him. This means, we're done, right here.
Did you get the double tee?
I did tackle him, man. Duty was out of order.